I'm going to. Board meeting of August twenty second to order, roll call please.
Trustee Herman.
President.
Trustee Brad.
Here.
Trustee Brunner.
Here.
Trustee Berblin.
Here.
Trustee Paul Kowski.
Here.
Trustee Catalaier. Here, presently.
Here, stand for political leader. Political leader in the United States of America. In due to its standards of our nation. For a public comment, this is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please have a time limit of three minutes. While the village board encourages input from residents that may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noted.
Sure, I had two public comment emails here, both related to the agenda topic related to the ballpark. The first is from resident Tyler Furman. Good morning, my name is Tyler Furman, I'm ready in regards to the proposed remodel of the backstop at the small diamond. I am ready to encourage the approval of this project along with being a coach at the nine and ten level in Cross Plains. I grew up playing in Cross Plains. The small diamond is in desperate need of an upgrade. For the most part, the field has not been touched since I played twenty-five years ago. This upgrade is desperately needed and I would encourage you and your fellow board members to move forward with the project. Thanks for your time. The second from Derek Ward. Hello, Brian, I'm reaching out to make my hope or make known my hopes that the board will approve the new backstop that is up for a vote tonight during the village board meeting. The backstop is in need of repair. Yesterday, when we were playing there, the ball went completely under the backstop. It's also starting to bend so far that someone could be injured by the metal that's sticking out. I know that Shavis Terry is willing to fund the entire project, so it shouldn't be a problem for the village. But he wanted to express the support of that project, please pass along my thoughts to the board tonight, that would be wonderful.
That's right.
And. I wanted to turn the floor over to John Barrant from our village sustainability committee, he wanted to give a recap related to the No Mo May initiative.
So. Good evening. When the board initially voted on approving pilot program for No Mo May. We were also asked to give a recap of that once it was over. And the sustainability committee tackled me to give that recap. So. Um, I am going to cover three areas. And this recap, I'm going to cover the science, community acceptance, and then an area that we really never expected, which was the positives that Cross Plains got for. In the news and the media for doing this. Um, the science of No Mo May has been studied and reviewed by many scientific and experimental groups. And that community is settled on the need to help pollinators survive early and grow sustainably, specifically in May. The sustainability committee did not feel we had the expertise, the funds, or really the need to do a localized scientific study. But what we did do is we opened up to anecdotal comments. Specifically people observing what was going on in their yards. And what we found was that most people were saying they received more bee activity. And other pollinators and that they were really feeding on the lion's fur and ground dyeing. And honest to God, that's what we hoped would happen. Um, since then, what we have heard, and again anecdotal, I'm not saying scientific at all, is that people are having better luck with their gardens this year. Our community acceptance of No Mo May was mostly positive. If we measured it by the yard signs that were out there, we placed all of the yard signs, we did fifty, and they kind of would have halted. Um, if we were hearing from community residents that they were participating, but they couldn't get a yard sign. My next door neighbor was like, we feel like idiots, we're, we don't have a yard sign and people are just like, they're not cutting their grass, but we're really participating. Um, but I also have to say that not all the comments were positive. Um. We had one of our members, as he was committee member, as he was cutting his grass that I'm doing first. One of his neighbors came over specifically to say that he disagreed with No Mo May because it invited mice and snakes to the community. Um. And I'm reporting it. That was really the only negative comment that we did hear though. We did hear from some people that it was hard to return their yard. Um, back to, you know. Normal acceptable length. We are going to probably reach out to the turf grass association at our department at UW. We put stuff out to help with that. This, this year, we're going to pass along those concerns and see if we can get a little bit better correction. If this happens next year. Um, but this is the part that I, I love. Because I got to be involved in most of this. Cross Plains was in the news nationwide for this. All three of our, well, not all three, three of the broadcast TV channels in Madison, it was three fifteen and twenty-seven. Mentioned us on air and on their website in news articles, and it was all positive news. The League of Wisconsin Municipalities interviewed its sustainability committee number, I'll quote that out, that was me. And asked about the program, why we were doing the program. And then put on their Facebook page a whole article on our participation and why we were doing it. And had our yard sign prominently posted on our Facebook page. The Wisconsin State Journal wrote a positive article about No Mo May and all the communities in the area by Cross Plains was mentioned. As, as one of the early adopters of the program. And then this is, I love this one. The Piedmont Master Gardener Association, which is in Virginia. They're associated with Virginia's are, I gotta get the right school. It's. Did I mention that? Virginia Tech. And the Virginia Cooperative Extension Service was it really, it's really kind of like our. UW Extension Service. They have a master gardener program and they have a statewide publication that goes out. They interviewed us, they mentioned us, and they put Cross Plains yard sign on their, in their magazine. Because as they said, it was the nicest one they had seen nationwide. And we heard it, but we could never track it down, that Charlotte, Virginia, also in their newspaper. Copied that article in and had it, so we basically, we basically hit nationwide in participating in this. Which I thought was cool in that I think it was all good news in Cross Plains, any good news is, is good news. In summary, the sustainability committee believes that No Mo May, the most. The No Mo May pilot program was a success in many ways, expected and unexpected. And while we are not going to formally ask for the program to be permanent tonight, because we're not on the agenda. In the future, we will be asking to make this a permanent program and make. I was just wondering if anybody had any questions, comments.
No, but thank you very much for the sustainability and you guys doing the lead on this. Appreciate it. All right, consent agenda, upon request of any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration on. Anybody have anything they'd like to move? All right, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Or the second? I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same. So move. Report from village officers, I got a few items I want to touch base with tonight. First, I want to thank everybody who is involved in National Night Owl and give special thanks to Officer Nikki Kimball. Who was the lead on it, like the public safety, fire, safety, public safety committee, everybody, that was a very nice event, very nice event. Lot of positive and it gets all the news agencies to a lot of them. The other thing on here that you see is the open meeting law information. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because I've heard some comments. And I just want to make sure everybody's clear on open meetings law, and there's one part of it, I handed out this to everybody this was in. The magazine, municipality magazine, June twenty-second. I think everybody knows that our forum is four and you can't have a forum outside without notice. And everybody kind of I think has a good idea of what a walking forum is. Matter of going, if you want to, if one person went to three other people and had a discussion over it, that's considered a walking forum. But the one thing that's in there that is not really touched much upon is what's a negative forum. And that's basically enough people to vote down an action. So for us, if it's a regular item that just takes a regular vote, four, three, if you had three and then you had four, you'd be in a forum. But where it gets tricky is where there are certain things, like tonight, our first item requires six votes. So really, two people talking about that and deciding, let's say they weren't in favor, can kill that. That is, would be needed, that meeting would need to be noted. That would be a violation of the open meeting law. The other part where you get a negative forum for us is if I tonight say I will not be at the next meeting. The September meeting, now that means there's only going to be six here, so three people could kill an action. So now, what a lot of people thought three was okay, in that case, it would not, because you were notified that the body was only going to have six. So I don't want to go into, I highlighted the area, there's a small one that is in bar that talks about a negative forum. So I would ask everybody just kind of read that. It's okay for us to talk to citizens, as many as we want, staff, as many as we want, but just be conscious when you start talking to other board members. How that can be, because you do not want to get placed into a lawsuit for this. So this is just something I wanted people to be aware of, so you're familiar with it.
Nice, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are there specific instances that we should be aware of?
Yes. My, my policy is I don't usually talk business with anybody, because. If you know, if you know what the, the, the vote needs to be, if you know it's just a standard one, then sure, people can do it, you're going to be okay. It's just, you just got to keep all this stuff in mind on how a negative forum. And a lot of people don't talk about it, because like the county supervisors, city of Madison, their numbers are so huge to get to a negative. Forum is really difficult for us, it's not. It's very simple to get it, because of, for us, three quarters vote is six people, right? So, Andy, do you?
Yeah, just wondering why you're telling us this.
Well, because I've heard comments where I know people have communicated with other ones, and staff has made comments where it sounds like. People are meeting, so I just want to throw it out as a head, I don't know any palpitations, so I'm not doing that, it's just, I want to make sure everybody, because that's kind of a unique one. It's not talked about, you know, a forum and walking forum are talked about all the time. Yeah, it's, it's, it's because it's most groups, it doesn't really matter. Because it, you know, it needs to be such a big number that you fall into a forum anyway. All right, and then what I'd like to do lastly is I'd like to recognize some of our colleagues here. One, I want to give Doug extra thanks for all the work he did in going out and finding the funding for the prevention yard sign. I know you probably lead the committee, probably helped it, but I'm guessing you were probably one of the leads in that, so appreciate that. Judy, I want to, we did that shred event, Judy was responsible for getting the funding. And three quarters of the staff that worked at it, we brought in one point two tons of material that needed to be shredded. We did that in two hours and just to help with sustainability, since we're on that, that saved twenty-four trees, five hundred and forty-seven gallons of oil. Five thousand seven hundred and sixty kilowatts of energy, ten thousand gallons of water and three point six cubic yards for the, from the landfill. Plus, it was a good safety thing for identity theft, because we got rid of all those records. The other good thing is the police department and the village was also able to shred their cube. So we saved some money that way, so I want to thank that. And then Michael, he's been working, as some of you may know, for the last eighteen months. The streetlight thing, we've been looking at, not only is he been looking at the energy use on kilowatts and stuff, but he also. Noticed that we were being overcharged on the number of streetlights. And brought up the concerns on the ownership. So we met last week at MG&E, agreed with the owner, not the ownership, but the number of streetlights we have. And they are rebating us over eleven thousand dollars from past charges. And we are in negotiations and we'll have another meeting on ownership that could be anywhere from probably three to five times that. As we're successful, so he's put a lot of time in, I want to just give him credit for that and we're moving forward. So all of you guys, it's a great job of providing services and not taking off, so thank you. Village president. I mean, vice president, sorry.
But I don't want. Well, I think the only thing, because it's a spike rep, I mean, it's not, it's coming up. Spike rep does become a ball, but it was a great event, brought a lot of people to Cross Plains.
Thank you, I just, sure, I have one other thing too, but okay, Spike rep was the first weekend of August, the weather cooperated extremely well. UCF tournament was full, volleyball was full, and baseball was full. We were, yeah, pretty good time, I thought, and thank God, we didn't hold off until after the day, so it's been a lot. Looking forward to next year, it'll be the last one, it's going to be a great send-off. Pretty nice one, we're going to revisit and rename and rebrand, we got to change things up. We, we had our good twenty-year run, so. Second thing I mentioned during trustee reports is the yard signs are here. We got a lot of positive feedback and we introduced for the National Night Owl, we'll start a little more with some social media, getting it out. Please grab one or two, encourage your neighbors to. We're asking for a small five or ten dollar donation, it's encouraged, but it's not mandatory by any means. They'll be available at both village office and at Montage. And it's not about assigning the yard, our whole goal is to engage and involve more of our residents in the public safety program. We're trying to encourage some convention, we're all locking the doors, common sense things, and also talking a little bit more about positivity. I think it's a small good start, and what we want to do is just continue that one decision.
Thank you. Anything else, Judy?
No.
Okay, other trustees report, anybody else would like to speak?
Emma? I just want to talk about Chief Tony invited Cody and I to do some lease training last Monday. They were doing the training, we were mostly observing and getting shots, but.
You didn't get paid?
No, no pay. But. I, most people probably don't know this, but my day-to-day job, I work in a software company, but it is a school safety company. I talk to, I've talked to thousands of school districts across the United States. And I talk about all of the horrible, you know, active shooting situation all day and all that stuff. So I'm a bit of a subject matter expert on this, one of the biggest things I hear from people that drift across the United States and how the police and the school district are kind of disconnected. And there's always some confusion about when something happens. And I just want to thank Chief Tony for taking that extra step to be prepared to bring his officers to the preschool in Cross Plains and train there. We spoke to the, you know, the principal at the Catholic school and the people who helped us out at the other two schools. And everyone was super appreciative that you was going an extra mile and doing that. And again, as someone who's talked to thousands of school districts across the United States, not many chiefs do that. And it was really great for him to do that and keep the students in Cross Plains safe, so thank you, Chief Tony.
And the fire department volunteered.
Yes.
Oh, that's right. They had four, four, or three firefighters and one EMS was there to be shot at.
Yeah.
For actual hands-on training, Kim and I got to step in and do some shooting too.
Good.
And be shot at, so it was kind of eerie at first, but it was, it was definitely good training for police department.
All right, anybody else? Andy?
Yeah, this cross country season started out, and well, I won't be personally coaching this year, first year off, but we've got three meets at Placure. And so we just had our first one, which was the alumni meet, which was very successful. And thanks to Mike Axon for going out there and helping to mow down stuff and build some poles and all your stuff. October first is the memorial race for Evan Cradwell, who was one of the three boys who was killed in the front driving accident out there. So hopefully we can stir some, some people up for that, so.
Very good. Thank you. Go ahead, Michael.
Um, I just want to say that on the seventeenth this month, we had a visiting section, strategic section, bird up. For what was going to happen possibly down on Brewery Road. Village engineer is going, we had community input emails, and this is a pepper pack, and all the emails that have been submitted to me will be in that. There'll be possible option drawings for what's going to happen on Brewery. For the community to see them, it's going to be noticed publicly in our meeting. We will listen to them and decide if we need another meeting or probably that final decision will happen at the actual Brewery.
Thank you.
Like, you said for a revote or for a vote?
For, because we're.
Were we in the end, we asked you?
Oh, the vote is.
Yeah, from, yeah. Village administrator.
Just one quick update, the village sustainability committee has voted to move their meetings from the second Tuesday of each month to the second Wednesday of each month, starting in September.
All right, thank you. All right, any other reports do we have? Okay, Bobby, then Mike.
I'd just like to thank Kathy Pohlmacher, Carol Randall, and Bill Brochus for joining me on Saturday at the Lion Energy Center to help conduct the recount from the August ninth primary election. Republican race for the second congressional district was the first race, so the recount petition was filed. I think they were expecting the wrap-up today, I just wanted to throw things on for a moment on the state of the game.
Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you all some updates on the ball basketball course, so that we're part, all getting poker. Having journey all over, what's handy, I'm back, we've hung up in twenty-five. They are getting there. They're painting the basketball court still, there's a few tunnels and a few lines down, then you have one next, you just walk from. Said a lot of inquiries about it already, a lot of inquiries, inquiries on the floor. We're planning a follow-up on nights for people, so we'll get that out, you buy more or less any kind of earthy thing that's like.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll go to general business. Number one is discussion and possible action on the approval of the Meyer CSM. They've been here a couple times, remember the first time, we had concerns with the road, making sure there was room for a future road. They went back. You can see on one of the last slides, or the last slide, they're modifying it to meet that, that need. They brought it back last month, we didn't have six votes, so it was postponed to tonight, so there's really. The reason this is coming up were for those reasons, so I think we're, we're pretty well set right now on that. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the two CSAMs, or two CSAMs.
All right, I have a first and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. So move, thank you for your patience. All right, discussion and possible action on Bear Park or donation, ballpark, small diamond. Mike, do you want to come up?
So. Staff was approached by a very giving individual to look at updating the backstop and dugouts. Along with some of the fencing around the small diamond up at Bear Park. Shane Steria approached me and asked me, what do you, you would make this happen? My plan at the time is to have him come to the park restoration committee meeting and talk about what he would like to see done. And also then we would all get to the board level and see what you want to add. He went a lot quicker than that approach and actually came up with a whole concept plan and design for it, which we, which we had in front of us there. And what he'd like to see, or what he would like to see go forward would be new brick masonry backstop behind the home right there. Roughly forty inches high, and then add an eight-foot chain fence above that. There would also be an addition of some type of shade structure over top of the current dugouts that are sitting there. And then added new fencing along the two, two sides kind of running out to the outfield. So currently, the outfield only goes about, it go about ninety feet out there and then it's open, and that will continue to stay that way, so it's still only runs about that. As you can see, and I know my, my approach to this was, it's pretty awesome, we want to get someone to come forward, let alone take the proactive approach to show us design, and everything we want to do along one-sided. I did have some questions for him and tried to reach out, I found some ADA things that we need to make sure that we can form to, and update this, this area. Along with materials that we would like to change for you, but my recommendation is to. Well, I was new for this approach, I did put together a number of understanding that you would go together with Shane Hassan. I just got done with that bill today and plan to send that out in fall, for him to look at, for him to look at, and start in the year. And then Shane Hassan is trying to embrace new looks, so. He had told me today that as soon as you know it's a good night, he'd like to know some lots of overall materials and get this done, so this year, the board is cool. So he'd like to move on tomorrow or Friday.
So what I think the best would be, so we want, we can move this, is to make a motion, if you're in favor to approve this with giving authorization. To sign for a few times memorandum of the tour and the president's assignment memorandum of understanding, once it's cleared the attorney in light. Then we don't have to bring it back, we can go on right away.
I'm going to go motions to approve this presentation. I'll say.
Okay, is your motion, what is it, I, I don't. Is it what I said, or what?
Motion approved. Depending on memorandum and ADA compliance, right?
True. Okay, I just want to, I just want to make sure, so we have it in the minutes, because we've been taught once before, but we got to come back, so thank you, okay. So I have a, a, a motion in a second, we're at discussion, go ahead.
Doug? So the, the first thing I would add is number one, I think it's awesome, and I'm always not patient too. James played for me, so maybe you got some of that from me. I think it's a nice investment in our community, and those all who's having that tough society, for your chances, but. There's also some momentum with the baseball program, which Cody and Travis, and I just ran our golf bowling on Monday, so we got a hundred and twenty golfers, that's double what it was last year. Community sports are challenged after COVID, we're kind of reenergizing, we're focusing through things, so. I think there's a thirst and what the public is going to try to use as smart opportunities to put more of this stuff in education, I think this is awesome stuff and something. Extremely grateful, Mr. Jerry, for donating that.
If I could do something like this would have happened with all the negativity that's been going on about our park systems and like, okay, hey. We're trying, even if it was privately donated, we're doing it, and it would be a nice example of what you can project over to the large diamond, once all the other stuff is down there.
And I, we looked at this, at the Parks and Rec Committee. Um, and a lot of the newer facilities are all basically carbon copies of what this is, uh, for Little League play. So I fully support and, and Seamus is a good dude. That's a, and he's not looking for any type of name recognition on a tooth bracket, he just wants to get this up there, he doesn't want like a big Seamus Terry field or anything like that, he just wants an improvement. I just have one question, I know it's, he's doing it for the Little League, but we have a lot of adults play softball and stuff there. Are those things tall enough for adults, the dugouts?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I, I didn't know if they made them little and then everybody's got a, got down.
Unless you're an adult, unless you're the side of the shack.
Okay, okay. Alright, yeah, okay, good. Michael.
Okay, so you said that the fencing running out to the outfield is pretty much gonna stop or you're gonna leave those sides open, you. Correct. Okay, so that's one question is you said ask presented, presented, I don't know if it goes all the way out, but he's saying it doesn't.
No, it looks about like it does there.
Okay. I was as curious as the writing says fencing the outfield ten foot wide gates, but.
I, so those are questions that I had afterwards.
Okay.
That's all my writing.
Okay.
My writing, I knew that there was some questions about it.
So it's like the picture like how it is now. Okay, um, my second question is, which I'm assuming wouldn't be being done if it wasn't legal or safe, but it's okay to put masonry behind the dugout like that, like. Yeah. Okay, that's what I was, you know, because I don't know, people are gonna be running into that, in that.
What tends to happen in balls, they hit the bottom area of that fencing fence, people curl up and then the ball starts just going to meet them all the time. And that's what we've been at, we've put boards behind them to try and bring the fence back down, but they still tend to curl up, it's seen the ball keep hitting us.
But do you put, I mean.
So he will, so his plan is to add pads on top of all the, it's nice for balls, not a little more, sorry. It, uh, planned is to add padding to this, though it wasn't part of the drawing, there will be some sort of padding added to the inside of it. And on the padding, we may have something that states, I don't know, maybe we could talk about it. Um, we hope you enjoy this, you know, this field as much as not on our, something like that. It'd be very small and sad.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
My guess is we'll put some people on there, something that sort of.
And it's a removable pad that you take away and don't lose your time?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Um, my second question then is that when we like redo the large diamond at Bear Park, will we be thinking that we want to put masonry behind that as well to match? And since that's not being donated, is that an incredibly large, large expense? I don't know if that would be donated.
But I, I would, I would say yes, that, that would have been the plan. And then, and then if you find that it's too expensive, you gotta find areas that they can away from, and that may be something.
That's what I saw too, I'm saying that they're picking further back. So the balls will not hit the people's back. Uh, a lot, a lot of fields have this, I'll see if people have. The masonry is more in the longevity thing.
When it says forty inches high with cap. Oh, forty inches high with a cap. It's gonna be some sort of cap, I think, I would think the forty inches.
Just like your first, you know.
Um, okay.
The only thing that did come up in the parking record, one of the coaches, Eric Look, the committee, he actually brought up that the need that they want to allow for new triple S A bats, so new triple S A bats have a lot more um, impacted, they allow the ball to come off a lot faster. So what he had said, he had noticed over the last year or so, is that a lot more balls were ending up behind, you know, into that house, into that driveway. So he talked about, you know, we may want to look at adding twelve foot fence rather than eighty. Uh, but to talk to Seamus about that, or the consortium company that's doing it, or adding that, that, that requirement higher.
Oh, the nets that come out, yeah, I've seen the pros do that, right? There might be opportunities, right? From my understanding, Seamus is very flexible with small changes we want to make, or we need to make.
Either, I don't know, area, let's see, you know, if we change some of the materials. So we're not using shingles and metal or a fabric or some sort of, um. Ideally, uh, we went with uh, metal, but the last just many of the main practices, so we're not having to really change anything. People were worried about all the denting that we have and the ball balls and everything, so we're vulnerable to something too. Do nothing, so we're trying to think of anything.
And, you know, is this the way the dugouts are now, are they forwarding like that, like they are just behind a fence or whatever?
There is a fence there too.
So there is a fence on the front, is that why it's?
Yeah, and that'll stay.
So how do you get in and cause?
Get anything out in the backside.
Where it says forty, where it says forty-eight inches?
Yeah.
That's where you walk in.
Oh, you come around. And, oh, so the whole front of that is.
The whole front is full, all. Yeah, so there was an update, yeah. Yes. We, we have, we pulled that in.
Oh, walls, don't forget.
Yeah.
That one pro guy did play one.
Well, and that's also what I was, why I was asking, you're talking about these new bats that are going that way, you had a foul ball, it's going you could go right into the net or into the dugout.
No, those are closed.
Yeah, but I'm saying if I weren't there with the bats, if you just go come around and if you're just driving a break down.
There's still will be. Alright, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. So move, thank you. Alright, uh, number three, we're gonna be going to the SIP, deal with uh, twenty twenty-three. What I'd like to do is we'll just go down list. And um, we'll have discussion first. And then we'll have motion, please do two motions either in the positive or if we feel we need more information to postpone it to the next meeting. Those would be the two, and then we can have detailed discussion and then, then, then vote on it.
Each item is a separate motion?
Correct.
I'm sorry, with twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, yeah. Otherwise, I think it'll be way too confusing to go, so I, I think we'll be able uh, to do that. So we'll start with. When they, oh.
One quick question, the staff priority. One being the most or four being the most?
One, one being the high priority, is that what you have here?
Sorry.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. Alright, uh, we'll start with Badger Books. Uh, the clerk, uh, there was quite a bit of information on that, do you want to just do any type of summary? Um, the only thing I would ask that's not in there and I sent you an email, uh, was, what's the cost saving?
Yeah, and I did calculate that, I can't remember. I know that, um, we would say, I think it wasn't the duct report. Um, we would eliminate two full workers, they're paid ten dollars an hour, so fourteen hours for the day. It's two hundred and eighty dollars, each election, three, four elections a year. Um, it says Renee, the most staff time. You know, if it's a presidential election, it's several days afterward that she's studying, reconciling elections, so we'll really cut down on that. Um. Yes, one day I wanted to come to your attention with an alternate source of funding instead of borrowing from them. Um, is to possibly use our extraordinary strength fund that we're getting next year.
Okay, alright, let, let's, let's, uh, I would like to move to approve Badger Books. Okay, yeah, has integrity.
Alright, do I have a second?
I'll start.
Alright, we have uh, a motion to approve and a second discussion. Let's not get too deep in the woods with where the funding's coming from.
Sure.
Is, uh, that's gonna be an issue on a number of these options, so let's just talk about the piece. And then when we do this in November and the actual budgets all together, then we'll have a better understanding of how we can make whatever we want happen, happen.
That's actually my question, is this, will this be out and running by in the.
Because this won't get purchased until next year.
Yeah, my hope is to order it right away in January, so we can get some practice in in the twenty twenty-three election, so then in the twenty twenty-four cycle, there's four elections. And by the presidential election, we're really good.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think anything we use is on the bottom margin in America is good. Okay, alright, is this a multi-year, like? It's gonna last, or is it gonna be a?
Oh, so they are like a tablet, so they're, you know, I would assume they were, need to be replaced every so often. I would not look into that, but there's no, a lot of products.
But there's a software update that would need to be purchased, or is it come with the?
I think, yeah, that's just all part of the software thing.
So, Michael, that was sort of like how we have to pay for like the website, like a yearly recurring fee for the softwares and what do you, do you think that that's?
I did not get any inclination and information I was given that there was an annual fee. It's just an upfront.
Once you buy it, you're good.
Yeah.
Alright, any, anything else? Can do a roll call vote, please?
Trusty Calvater?
Yes.
Trusty Paul McCoskey?
Yes.
Should be Burcom?
Yes.
Should be Brunner?
Yes.
Trusty Hartman?
Yeah.
Trusty Brandon?
Yep.
Ben Langford?
Yes. Alright. Okay, the next one is the HVAC system, equipment and software replacement for the library, Pam, you wanna come up?
Sergeant Roelke on office.
Uh. Most of, I, I would say not the ones we've already approved, so the ones that have not been approved, you'll see as we go.
So, yes.
Well, no, no, because we've approved a whole one, more than half of these have been approved. It's the matter because of the, on the borrowing schedule. You wanna just give us a little update on this?
Yeah, the current equipment and software is necessary for operating the library HVAC system is obsolete. Uh, it's probably about ten years old. We have done, um, about three or four software upgrades, and we got it through very nicely with that equipment, but it is no longer supported. And the equipment is now obsolete and it will not be supported by our HVAC company's computer specialists as of January first. So we need to uh, replace that equipment, and this equipment is used to regulate you and publish air and temperature controls in the building. And uh, the HVAC company is also able to remount in. Using this equipment can sometimes troubleshoot problems without having to infer a fault, or not them, they haven't, not people look yet. So uh, the quote is, uh, ninety big quote, I checked with the uh, computer company, they said to maybe use a rate of inflation to add a little bit onto it, they don't expect it to be much higher than the sixty-two fifty that was originally in here. But just to be on the safe side, um, they're using the current rate of inflation, right, the time I wrote this up, at eight percent and are requesting a total of sixty-seven, I had fifty dollars to come in this spot.
Okay, is there any discussion and questions for Pam?
I'm going to breathe the HVAC system equipment self-disaster. I'll start.
Alright, I have a motion and a second discussion. So just, I wanna make sure you're, you're just replacing basically the brains of the system operating, the furnace, uh, the air conditioner, everything's fine, this is just like the thermostat and, and how it. Alright. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trusty Burcom?
Yes.
Trusty Paul McCoskey?
Yes.
Trusty Calvater?
Yes.
Trusty Brandon?
Yes.
Trusty Hartman?
Yeah.
Trusty Brunner?
Yes. Yes. Alright. Okay, the Zander Park Pavilion. Whoa, 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 can I just?
Sure.
Because we don't, this is one that we don't need a motion. We have a memorandum of understanding. Okay, um, the reason it's on here was because of the.
Just really excited for it.
I, 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 I hear it, man, I hear ya, and my suggestion is we've already borrowed from this back in twenty nineteen. Um, we have enough in our fund balance and the capital that I think if they need this fund, we can just take it from there. So I don't think there's any action that needs to happen tonight. We have a memorandum of understanding, we have a source to pay for it, so there's no reason to throw it to borrowing, we don't have to have it. Everybody okay, understand? Alright. So now we're going to uh, twenty twenty-three electric uh, upgrade Hickory Hill. Uh, Mike, you wanna come up and talk about this?
So the current electrical system that is on top of the hill is from probably nineteen fifties. Um, it's in, it's not in good shape at all, uh, I can give you some pictures if you'd like to see them as well. When we went up this last year to do the, the big event, there's probably two hundred people on top of the hill. We literally did the drum roll and then went to plug in the lights, just, and it was, and half of them came on. So it looked uh, really bad, it was embarrassing, um, for me, it was really embarrassing for the chamber. And uh, so what I did is not really Nelson Electric and have them come up and look at the current system that's there. Um, he recommended us not using any more going forward, it's just not safe. And came up with a new plan for what we should do, um, and if that's what you have, then for advice.
Yeah, 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 absolutely, that's how we're doing it, yeah.
Um, do we use it for any, I mean, I love a tree light. That, that the only thing you deliver.
That is the only thing we use for. That's the only thing we do for it, yeah.
No, the tree light is a huge thing, and everybody uses it, same.
I think they do a lot, a lot up there, other than just the tree lighting. Well, we do plant lots, we just don't use the.
You know, recently a lot of people say this.
Is it because it's so old and outdated? And there's a lot of research down that, that site as well.
So I'm, I'm just gonna throw something out here, on the other side, is it worth fixing that one up? Or do we change the lighting and maybe put it down like in Vander Park or somewhere else that?
It's tradition, man.
Okay, I, I'm just throwing out an option out there.
Everybody hear about it on Facebook, but it's not with you.
Okay, I'm just throwing it out, now would be the time, because we invest this money, now that's kind of where we're locking in our lighting of the Christmas tree when there might be a.
Holiday tree.
Holiday tree, I'm sorry, thank you, the holiday tree, so the question is, is there maybe a better place?
You know, I honestly think if you put out there for donations, somebody may donate, say, and, because they have such a tradition, and say, I will pay for it. If you really threaten that.
I heard State Bank across flames.
But really, I don't know, the people are all about that, they're all of all.
Where you can do.
Right.
And there might be opportunities to do some other stuff, if you have a genuine.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, for sure.
Alright. I'm just.
Uh, I'm gonna go like maybe three, yeah, that's what I'd rate. Go ahead, second.
Alright, roll call vote, please.
Oh, I'm there too, I, I know when there will be a fund balance.
No, don't worry.
I don't worry about that, so my question would be, obviously, ideally, if this is approved, I'd love them to get started now. Like work on this while it's one, you do it completely before uh, the holiday season. And I know, obviously, that's one for next year, I'm sure you can find the building side of it, but we have to get rolling right now. Get some of the support, the parts that might not be left from supply, they're really struggling, so.
Uh, let me, I, 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 I think that's a great idea, I don't think we can commit right now, I think we have to look at things. But let me, I think we should amend the motion. If, if people are comfortable with moving forward and doing it this year, then we're certainly not gonna buy it.
So how do you want to amend?
Well, it would be amended that we approve this with the condition if they can be paid for this year, we move forward with it. Um, or that the work can be done and then we pay for it next year, we have to. I hear what Mike's saying, because if we don't do it now, you're not gonna have it for this Christmas, or this holiday season.
Sure. How would you make the motion?
I, I would make the motion that we approve the upgrade of the electrical system in Hickory Hill, if feasible, do it this year with funds, otherwise borrow for next year.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the electrical upgrade. I'm going to make a motion to approve the electrical upgrade in Hickory Hill, if feasible this year. If not, with funds from next year, we borrow it.
A second. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Trusty Brunner?
Yes.
Trusty Burklin?
Yes.
Trusty Paul McCoskey?
Yes.
Trusty Calvater?
Yes.
Trusty Brunner?
Yes.
Did I?
You didn't. I'm gonna vote yes to that one.
There are.
No, yeah, yes. All right, now the half, the next one, I'm gonna jump. We don't need to do anything. That was approved last year, and it's carried over. So there's really nothing to be done there. Okay, so then we're at the Polaris G E M electric utility vehicle. Uh, Mike?
Yeah, so I just had this in here to replace the red van. Actually, since this time, uh, and so the red van is new correct department purposes. And it's offering to utilities purposes. Uh, it's Jerry Goldman, the. It's uh, my idea with this was that we could, we could still use it multi-use, like uh for, for both departments, obviously. Um, since I put this together, the, I did get some confirmation back that the carbon reduction grant is going forward for next year as well. So if we have money appropriated for uh a vehicle, to change it out from a gasoline vehicle to an electric vehicle. They'll pay eighty percent of that fee. So that's also what I'm waiting for with the, the truck, uh which is what I see up there. I applied for it this year. They then said that they were taking the grant away for this year, but they're going to keep the application, and use it again next year. So we could call all five boys, um within that program. So that would be a six thousand dollar cost rather than thirty.
Okay, um I sent you an email earlier. Can you tell me what the cost of a charging station? That should be incorporated, and also inside an electric vehicle, if we don't have a charging station.
Charging station inside the, to, to go up to the, to, to point services.
I, I'm just trying to figure out where we're gonna charge electric vehicles. Fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred dollars to change it up. I mean, to, to put it, to add a service in there like we would for a gem or for any other path management. And that would likely work at more people vehicles, correct? So, but to actually have a charging station outside?
No, 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 no. I, I just, there's no sense in buying an electric vehicle if we can't charge.
Well, one can't charge at all.
Yeah, you could use this as standard.
It's a long, long time. Overnight, overnight, over vehicles, they recharge overnight anyway. Depends how much you use. Uh, I mean, I, I have an electric vehicle. My charger is broken right now, so I had to use standard plug, twelve amp. Um, I mean, it took a day and a half to get a hundred miles. So again, it depends how much you're driving, ready, or.
So, but you usually have a two-twenty then?
Usually, yeah, I have one.
And how long does that take?
Oh, that only takes six or seven hours. It's like charging your phone.
So what the cost to move one?
I don't know what it costs for the electrical work, because that was covered by the car manufacturer, but the actual charter itself was eight hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Better. I can check. I can get a little closer on that, so I didn't, I forgot about that.
All right. I just think that needs to be inferred.
Yeah.
All right, um, so.
And I would say that.
Thirty-one fifth, five hundred.
I would say that that's contingent upon grant. I do find that.
And the grant is six thousand per year, per year. Uh, the grant is eighty percent.
So whatever the possibility vehicle is, eighty percent.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be thirty-one fifty then. It'd only be.
Well, no, we have to put in for full. We have to put in for full to show, I, I, I'm trying to figure out, a lot of grants don't let you uh. So plans, so they usually don't want you to have it in your budget, but if this one requires it, so they know they have the match, then we gotta put in the full amount.
For the plan and the resolution, you are correct. So I thought the resolution later, you know, once you know that we got it, we would do a resolution from the board saying that they. Might thirty-one thousand, five hundred for budget, only needing to have a city six thousand, whatever. So we would, we would break the model of that money.
Right. All right.
Make the motion that we approve the two thousand, because Polaris G E M electric utility vehicle. Subject to the grant, eighty percent of.
All right, do I have a second? All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm just curious why we're taking motions on this, but not other things that are already planned, like why are we taking a motion on the halftime?
Because the halftime we did last year, the money's there. We borrowed it already.
Sitting in a column.
So then what is the column that says project status four? That's.
Plan, it was in the C I P in prior years, not that it was a cool thing on.
Okay.
It just means like, this is the first time anyone's ever seen it, that wasn't on a plan.
Okay.
So that's what's confusing to me. So we don't, there's no indication here what's already borrowed and what's not.
Uh, it'll say carried forward, or it'll say approved in.
Yeah, I don't know.
It does kinda say that. Yeah, it can read that, that tells you what was approved before.
So fund balance means we've already paid for it.
No, no, you're, you're, he's looking at their firm. I, I think we're just getting all confused, but uh the, the wording on there. Tells you like, if you look, replacement of the two thousand five Dodge truck was approved for twenty twenty-two. So we approved it. We borrowed the money. It's sitting there. We're ready to go. The truck's just not available. But there's a bad, all right?
Okay.
The Polaris, that wasn't approved at any point, so now we have to approve it, so they can move ahead and purchase it.
Okay.
So I, I, I would not worry about the source of it right now.
Or, okay, gotcha. Or the fund, or the project status.
Yeah, oh, really, I do.
Yeah.
This is the plan. It's not the budget. So, and the budget is where we show how we're paying. Trying to see it.
Okay, we ready for a poll on that? Okay, so uh let's do a roll call on uh Polaris G E M.
Trusty Hartman?
Yes.
Trusty Brandon?
Yes.
Trusty Calvater?
Yeah.
Trusty Paul McCoskey?
Yes.
Trusty Burklin?
Yes.
Trusty Brunner?
Yes.
Don't that link though?
Yes. Okay, now we're at Melanie Acres Playground Update. Go ahead.
Uh, this is just a replacement of the playground at Melody Acres Park. Uh, it's been in the C I P now, I think every year that we've been doing the C I P. Uh, this playground was put in nineteen ninety-five, so it's one seven years old. On average, the playground within the community, there's a lot of variance within it, but uh should last twenty years. We're at twenty-seven for this park. Um, I don't see a lot of people or kids playing in this park. A lot of it could be the fact that the playground is as old as it is. Um, we have had a number of repairs. He's actually taken out a number of items that are already on the playground or within this, fire swing. Um, couple of other things as well. So. I have it in here for replacing in twenty twenty-three.
Do you have a plan that shows you need fifty thousand? And this is the only reason I bring this up. Is we're spending thirty thousand at Glacier Ridge. And I read where there's twenty thousand for scenic valley. Now, I don't know if that's gonna grow or not. So I'm trying to figure out why fifty thousand for one, thirty thousand for another.
So, so fifty thousand was stable, uh that we, that we decided as a group, uh when we started the capital improvement plan. Ideally, that would actually grow over the years, and it's because, you know, five years ago, we got inflation within this queue. So you're trying to make it so that you get a replacement of the same equipment that's currently in that park. And you felt like for all the residential parks, so rather than just being the smaller neighborhood parks. Uh, fifty thousand dollars would provide us with the same service of equipment in these parks. If the board decides that they'd like to do less, you could do that at the time that we do the plans, you know, like throw out an R F P to all the different groups and say. Please give me the best playground you can at thirty thousand, a hundred and fifty, but it's, it really changes throughout the year. And it changes on the site as well, how much you put in that will fit in that area, or how much you put in that for price. So, for instance, when we did Cedar Glen Park back in two thousand and fifteen, it was fifty thousand dollars. It was fifty-one thousand three hundred dollars. So if you went to look at that playground, I mean, that's what we tried to replace it with. What was for me, at least the footprint and or the age groups that were trying to.
But your earlier comment, and I agree, I rarely see people, kids there at all. And there's still swings and two of the jungle gyms and the spinner and the horses on sprints. I'm just wondering, does the neighborhood have any input on this? Because is it possible they may wanna convert some of that to open space?
I hope so. Uh, no matter what, the, the footprint of that playground will be different. I won't be too sad. That's old school. It's hard to beat A D A. There's a lot of issues there. Um, so there would be some added green space already. I feel like we're even the, the current plan if we have fifty thousand. Uh, we will do a neighborhood meeting uh before the starts, ask them what they want, just like we have in every other park that we've done. Um, and at that point, if they come back for it well, we'd like to see more of a hot lot park and maybe a basketball court. That's fine, knowing that there are funds available to do so. We just need to use those specs and make sure that we can make the happen for those prices. And not obviously come back to you asking for more money. Um, neighborhoods change often, so, you know, this is one of the older neighborhoods, probably a lot of the cheaper homes in the, in front lines as well. So you may have a turnover with a lot, younger families in, in their future that, you know, wanna play around, that's, that's supposed to be a home. Um, but I don't know until, you know, we have ones where we know what everyone's for with the project.
Is this one of the oldest playgrounds we've gotten from?
Yes, this one in Glassview, National Municipal, are right around the same age, and then their park is next.
Wow.
Have a whole plan now set up about the years and when you hold to. And finally, now we're talking about this between Melody Acres and Glassview, you've been talking about these two for five years, probably, so.
They just keep getting put back and put back.
Anybody else have any questions?
Oh, no questions. I live up there, and I walked down to that park today, and. I know it's twenty, twenty-five years old, but it has a merry-go-round on it, and you spin it. There's no wobble in it all. The thing works really well. I mean, I was impressed. I was like, wow, this thing works. So there's a bar you get on that you slide between two things. That thing just slides like, there's no stuttering at all, but it. Yeah, I mean, it works really well. I, I, I do want to see my home right there.
Yes, just to be like.
Um, but yeah, there is some needs to some of the other equipment, but. I don't know. And I, I, I mean, I understand your desire to replace it, but. It isn't like things are just falling apart, falling off of it, is what I'm saying.
They get to that part, you're in big trouble. As a community, as a, as an insurer, you're, you're in big trouble. Things are part where they're falling apart.
Yeah, and I know that, like you said, you replaced the tire swing up there, but you replaced it with a two-seater swing set that you must have had lying around in the back. And, or, or not in the back, but somewhere. It wasn't at that park, I don't think, or did you move?
No, exactly. We just, we choked the tires.
Oh, okay, well. Yeah, the tire was all, but then like it was just. Yeah, so you replaced it with that swing set that's there. Um. I don't know. I, I mean, I know that this has been delayed numerous, numerous times. And, I don't know, I mean, looking at the condition of the stuff, if it was in worse condition, I would be much more inclined to, but. I get kinda split with this, because we're looking at all these individually, and the next thing is the full filter replacement. And so that's where I kind of start to look at departments and what's being done. And what do you, what do you do, you know? Um, because. I don't know, for next year, there wasn't a whole lot on there in terms of. Park replacement or parks requests pushing it back here, but this would just be a pushing it out another year kind of thing. Should we not wanna borrow this year? Just sort of my thoughts and going up there and what I found, looking around. I did talk to a resident who lives right next door to the park. I mean, he, he does minimal maintenance, goes and pulls dandelions. They'll even go over and like oil the swings sometimes when they don't squeak, he said. See, he lives right next door to it. And he said, I mean, his opinion was like, the stuff isn't really in all that bad shape. He did ask if more park could be added to the flooring of it, or. And did you guys buy that park blower piece?
No, they're a slinger.
Oh, or sorry.
If they have a tractor that's operational. The parking.
Okay.
It was to get it back in a week or two.
Those, those were just his comments.
And that was a. Yes, some of my concerns, if you're delaying this park project. You delay the other ones, right? Because you're gonna get to a point where, you know, you know, all of a sudden the conversation is, we gotta, we gotta replace Melody. Well, it's the second oldest one, you said, and west of you at the same years, and that's gonna be a tough pill to swallow, so. I don't know what to do, um, and how we should be basing our park replacement decisions. Is it on popularity? Is it on oldness?
Well, see, I, I, I'm gonna just go old school. I think you replace when it needs to be replaced. I, I, I like the timeline in the sense of looking at that, and that's when we should examine it and stuff like that. But um, just to replace it because it hits a certain age, you know, I just have a hard time with that. And then I always like to see, what are we getting? I mean, I'd like to have seen what the plan was. So I'd like to see the work done on the front end, talking to the neighbor and everything like that. Then you have a realistic. Cost on what it's going to cost. That, that's just where I'm coming from, instead of waiting and writing one check.
I, I like what you're saying, but if you go and like ask around the neighborhood and say, hey, we're thinking about putting the park in. Everyone's gonna say yes, and then you come back to the budget, and we say no, then it's gonna look poorly upon Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
Like, hey, we're, this is, this is in our scope of things to do. And never mind, you're gonna have a ticked off neighborhood.
Well, I just think it's easier to support something if you see what you're supporting. Right now, I'm writing a check for fifty thousand. I have no idea what it's going to be, and then I'm trying to balance what we're doing with other neighborhoods, you know? I mean, I know we're restricted in new neighborhoods to how much of the park impact be, so that's where we set the limit. But yet, we're going to another one, and we're almost doubling the amount we're willing to spend. So I'm trying to also throw the fairness along there.
Well, I think you have to look at it a little bit different than that, though.
Okay.
Developers already put this playground in back in nineteen ninety-five, right?
Right.
It's like we're gonna be with the scenic valley, but all the others. Um. If we're not gonna replace them with, you know, village farms, then maybe we don't put them in the beginning, and then it's. That, that will be good either, so.
And also trust.
Hold it. We got Andy, then Michael, then the stuff.
Well, it's trusting, like, the community and the Parks and Rec Committee to take that fifty thousand dollars and do students of it. And make the right choices and seek community input, uh which I trust through it.
Michael?
Um, I was just gonna comment that you were talking about, we aren't limited in new developments with the developer. We can always add more money to a park like that. You just said made that comment. We could supplement the park impact.
But we have.
I know, but I gotta say that that option exists.
Right, so here's, here's what that, and, and Mike, I'm just gonna take a little bit. We have invested in parks. I know two years ago, we invested a hundred and forty-five thousand in a park on, on Urban Road. That. Probably more than most communities have done, so it's not like we're skimping on spending money on our park system. And it's not a matter of trust. It's your committee, the, the Public Safety Committee, I'm not Polaris, I'm sorry. Parks and Rec were able to come up with a playground for thirty thousand, right? And now, I guess the question is, why can't they come up with another one at thirty thousand? Why fifty thousand? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Why am I ju, why are we?
Four lonely homes that are using this. Right, like it says, you have two hundred and forty homes or whatever gathered up in Melody Acres that would be using that playground equipment, providing all of them with both kids. You have forty-three homes that that's supposed to take care of.
Understood that.
That's how you came up with thirty-seven.
And you think we have two hundred over on that other one?
I'll stay a hundred.
Yeah.
It's a pretty large development, Melody Acres.
Yeah. No, no, no. I'm just trying to figure out how we do the math and how we pick these numbers. It's, it, you know, no one here runs their home that way, where you give a car dealership fifty thousand, say, get me a car. No, you choose what you want, and then you pay for what you wanna get. That's the only thing I'm saying. That, that's where I'm having a hard time.
You, you don't like the idea of paying upfront without knowing what you're giving.
Thank you.
But even though we say fifty, doesn't mean you'll still come to us before you spend it. And you know, fifty's your budget. You'll come to us, and maybe you'll only spend forty or thirty bucks. We'll see the plan, but you'll also show us, because you might actually be over. And you know, you can't.
You could do it.
So if we approve the nine fifty, there is a chance that you could be less than fifty. So if we approve tonight fifty, there's a chance that you could be less than fifty, but it won't have another kick out at any.
No, you won't. Our policy is, once we approve it, they get to spend up to that amount. We don't get another kick out.
So what would you deal with spending? So we spent thirty-seven on a playground over here, uh, over the. Whatever the parks, I don't even know what's the name.
And have that been installed?
Hasn't been delivered, so I'm a little waiting to use it off.
See, that's really, I saw like thirty-seven.
I can show you with fifty thousand, I started talking about, see, when fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, see, that's a.
That's a village staff.
That's a fifty thousand dollar guy up there on what?
Now, it's, yeah, that was ten years.
Uh, my comment is. To me, that development seems very reasonable, but like, I don't based on. Like, also, I've been out here in the past, I also had a very good experience being part of the Rast, very part of the community. We actually were able to get some more equipment and make a bigger park because we had a big football neighborhood volunteers who assembled. I love the way that Mike works with the neighborhoods and the communities, and that's what we want. It can build, it brings some neighbors together. Ours was done on. Oh, it's not on our list yet, but I do think when the developers, you know, use the developer only, we can maximize it by putting volunteer time up or help. To continue to maximize parks, but I do think as a community, we want to invent a season of parks for our children to play. More advanced than we're here. It's the same with their parking stuff, but we've been wanting to take stuff down the road, people get that office, so. So I think there's probably two things, municipality, we want.
Well, I just, well, hold, we're not, I I guess, I I agree with you a hundred percent, but the question I have is, the park is there. I'm with Michael, the equipment looks good, you know, I'm not an engineer to look at the whole. So we're replacing it just to replace it because of time. I agree with you a hundred percent, we need to have that, but. If it's not broken, why are we replacing it? But and I don't think it's just because of time. So it's like your car, it's like your siding, your windows, there's just certain things that you need to replace.
Maintenance, replacement, I mean, things have a shelf life or a usable life. And we can take it down, but when you take it down, there's gonna be another part that maybe has one, so one will keep getting neglected. Neighborhoods will play figures and say, well, why did the one on Bourbon get such an awesome park? Well, what's that done for our village? It's about a destination park, people come in from other communities and not only discover that park. Discover our businesses and take it far. I think it's, it's proven that it's smarter to have plans like this and. I mean, we could paint it and do the bearings and keep doing that in a certain park and then. I think, I I just think it's short term versus kind of longer term, I don't think you. Lock them one off at a time or however you say it. So I just wanna, Mike, if we were to approve this. You would go to a company and have a drawing of this done, correct? Like what we did before. That we approved the park to go into. Beacon Farm. So that's thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of equipment.
Can you keep, based on their equipment that is still going, can you keep and reuse that and then just replace with others?
Not mutually, it depends, it really depends on the structure itself. Um, you know, the one that did that commercial valley, that's all that equipment was donated, uh, so it was put up in, um. Travel country something like that, but they just send us pictures of it, uh, kids enjoying it, so they can get away with that in the company in the United States.
So, so which one was approved or which one was?
They both were. That's when you get real difference, and that's why when you look at a company. That's why, you know, when you talk with the neighborhood and you ask them, what are the variables or what are the things you'd like to see throughout the playground? They give you the five things that they really wanna see, and then have them draw it up, and each company is a little bit different. Obviously, verve of leisure products is what we have pretty much throughout the village across planes. They're the most expensive playground, that's where the one on the bottom that you saw, very minimal. Um, Burke Recreation, which is now a lead, they tend to give you a little bit more for for your money, so it really depends, you know. It depends on the year.
Part of the cost too, right? So when you go in there, you raise, you basically, the village staff takes it all down.
Yeah, we take, that does not count, that's not totally.
Okay.
I end up donating again, then that company comes in and actually pays.
Before we vote on it, is there a possibility that we hear about the pool filter replacement? Just because you wanna post, then you'd make a motion. There is no motion on the table, so you can postpone it to at the end of this.
My, my rationale is, okay. I like to do a park improvement a year at least. So if the pool filter wanted to go on shebanggo this year and we would be needing a new one, then I'd be like. Melody Acres, I don't have an issue with the park improvement thing, but if the pool filter becomes. The park improvement thing for forty-five thousand dollars, one shirt and if I can justify ninety-five thousand dollars inside. Parks capital when the. Westview Park is in schedule to be done in twenty twenty-five and there really don't, and park really doesn't have anything on twenty twenty-four yet. Which that would probably come up unless you're gonna do the Large Diamond update, which is, or the study for that, which is ten thousand dollars. I know that those next years, it's always very flexible and things get added, and this has been kicked down, but that's why was, why I wanted to hear that. Because if pool filters are gonna go kablammo. And I'm improving forty-five thousand dollars inside of the C I P, the pool is gonna be a lot more than the Park and Melody Acres. Was my justification for wanting to juxtapose the two rather than do them as individual items.
Okay, so if you wanna make that motion, go for it.
Or just some.
I would move to approve the Melody Acres playground update. All right, well, second, all right, so a motion is second to approve the Melanie Acres Playground update. Roll call vote, please. No.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. No. All right. Going to cross plane pool feasibility study slash planning, ten thousand dollars.
Also. Since then, uh, talked to the resident Mike, oh, you've come up with a separate plan, like to see. Uh, staff more or less take this on within the Parks and Recreation Committee and also, uh, users outside, so picking different people. From team, uh, from our senior, different groups, uh, to start this feasibility, so, um. Without going with a, with, without having a landscape architect and engineer. Uh, work alongside us, so it'd be more or less just taking this on and not paying this type of, this type of money. Since I since I sent this in, I actually did meet with a landscape architect, who's done a number of these plans, they've done three of them as of late. One in the forest, one in the barland, and then the other place, uh, and I was, uh, I was actually. Short on this, it's the P four, he's given over the plans of twenty thousand and ten, so. I thought it was in ten, not with ten, without adding any numbers.
Okay, hold on, I got Judy, then Michael.
How do you feel about this as far as your time frame, you like. Working, like, can you bring your chat job and then do this also? Do you feel like you have time to do a lot?
It's hard, they're hard to do, but I would be a part of it either way, so. I think the, the biggest thing that worries me about us taking this on and we get open start is. If the, is the location, right? So if we choose to do it in the current location. I have no idea what those costs could be, tear that thing up and start over, right? That's where I'll struggle for that, I would probably. Uh, choosing the up, choosing a new location and doing it in a deeper site is great, but we've only done it on a concept basis. So I don't, I don't know where all the water runs, I don't know where the, where this should be located when we're to do it. So I don't know whether that actual concrete plants in that area. Um, but we can come up with, what do we want? What does the community want to see? We can come up with, you know. Uh, the, the square footage and all those, I don't see that settling, probably that, but. We won't have any pretty plans to go out with the fundraiser board. Um, and we won't really have a definitive number, I think we'll have an idea, but I think we kind of have it now, when you put up the meeting. Uh, but I do feel like we can do a lot of the. You know, meeting with the community and asking them what they want and where they wanna see it, I think we can do all that. Uh, but I don't see this changing having an actual plan, forming a plan for all of you to make an educated decision on the actual cost for this.
Yeah, yeah, Michael, then Cameron.
I, I guess my question was, at the beginning, I'll say, was, did you say it was ten thousand or forty thousand?
It's ten, I I go with ten, uh, when I, I never been on data, these were you and, uh. I told him, you know, I've talked to Jay and I think it was gonna go this different route, but then, thank you, I'm looking at this stuff and asking what.
I guess you're still just asking for ten?
I'm not asking for anything.
Oh.
I, I, that was in there still. I mean, if the, the board wants to see it happen in a different way, that's, that's fine, I mean, I feel like we could have a good plan in place, we're just maybe thinking it out and start. Uh, but like I said, I don't know how much of that is gonna be definitive for all the decisions.
Cameron, do you wanna say quoting?
So there's a cost, I mean, I understand there's a cost, but you don't generally. Budget for like getting community feedback on like parks and stuff, right?
No, no, and we do those, depending on the project, but normally we do those in house time alone.
Right.
Unless you need engineering or you, it's, it's more specific, right? Like a pool is pretty specific.
Right, um, I guess, I'm, I'm confused because I, I guess, I don't understand, I mean, people have been talking about a new pool for, I mean, way longer than I've been here. I, I don't know what the long-term pool plans are for any pools or funding options. I know Jay and I have kinda like talked about it on the side, you know, but it's like. I, I just don't know when we need things in place. I mean, we're about to go spend millions of dollars on a new village hall and police station, so I imagine. A new pool probably isn't in the near future, given that, so like. That, that, I, I don't have enough information to make an educated decision here, I don't think.
Or you than myself, oh, dog, than myself.
What I was gonna say is like what Mike was talking about, when you were talking about in our Parks and Rec meeting and. Yes, it is possible for us to do this, but it's gonna put back the new pool, I would say at least a year or two, but the time you get enough people. Enough input, enough to go on, it's just gonna delay the inevitable. It's only gonna push it back. Now, I, I don't like the thought of spending twenty thousand dollars, but if we were to do that, I'm not saying we need to, but. We would have something, we would have good data, we would have, here's where you can go, it's gonna cost you this, here's where you go, it's gonna cost you this. I mean, just in this room alone, I'm sure we have four different opinions on where the pool would be, whereas if we had an outside firm doing it. They would probably tell us where our best option lies.
Twenty-seven sixteen south of.
That's. I would like to see some, a little more support from the swim team, the stakeholders, my funders. Uh, and being a part of the plan. Taking more ownership of it. The Large Diamond, the Fair Park, Forest Field, those lights were paid for and sourced by the cost of this base all over. The village helped, um, a lot of the hometown players. Uh, who made their time on fire, they saw, um, doing a lot of creative things to help the lets that down in a way that was needed. So they have skin and they can, for the pool, when they have swim teams are full. There's a lot, there's opportunities there for fundraising and partnership, both in the plan and in the funders. This is the point I, I don't think we should as a village, I think there's opportunities there as well.
All right, okay, just so people get, it's where I'm coming from is. When you start a feasibility study at this point here. You're paying top dollars for them to do the same thing, talk to the swim team on what they need from the pool. Talk to other stakeholders, talk to residents. They're gonna ask us, okay, where are the places you could put a pool, right? I mean, we're paying for things that I believe we can get to step one. And I, and I'm gonna use, if you look at the Village Hall Police, uh, Station process. We have gone pretty much through it to where we've actually purchased a lot. We've gotten all kinds of information and we haven't done a feasibility. I can pull the one that they did, probably spent twenty thousand dollars on in twenty thirteen. And yes, I'm partially using that, you know, for parts of it, but. A feasibility study of what you're talking engineer, it needs to be going on to second base. We haven't hit first base yet. The first basis for, and my suggestion was to set a subcommittee. Of, of the Parks and Recreation to get people together. I mean, it's not that hard to sit down with swim team, I can tell you from being on the board, they definitely want eight lanes, you know? That's what's stopping us from, uh, hosting conference because we only have six. I'm thinking they're saying, well, parking is kinda important, you know, that's where the big hassle of the, of it is right now. They probably can come up with a few other things out there. I think people who do the lessons. And other stakeholders in community would have it, so I'm not saying not to do this. What I'm saying is, we are not ready for that. And later tonight, you're gonna see the long-term facility plan that you all should have read that came from staff. You know, and that has a priority list, and are we really saying here that we think the pool should bump Village Hall? And, and the police station, I think that's a loser. No, 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 I'm not saying that, but what I'm saying is, can this village, I mean, a pool cost, if you looked at that long-term study. Mike is saying, you know, four to five million. City Hall Police Station is gonna be four to five million. That's eight to nine million dollars. Unless we go to referendum, we're not gonna be able to do both in a short period of time. We can plan it out and this will be a different discussion, so it's not so much that I'm trying to. Slow anything down or not doing it, I think the next step is for internally, let's identify the spots. What are the pros and cons of each spot? What are the needs that the stakeholders that we need to do? That's what needs to be done, I think, first, because then when we hire someone. They have much better direction than we're just using them for their skill set and not collecting and paying four hundred and fifty dollars an hour. They have a community meeting with swim team, that's just where I'm coming from on that. Cameron?
Yeah, I agree, and I guess I just, I'm confused while we're talking about it. Now then, because, I mean, you, you had said you do that stuff for parks, so it's, it's not a thing that's funded, so. Couldn't, couldn't the parks committees?
Well, no, but this request, this request is to bring in a third park. That's what it.
We've had a lot of requests though from village residents, I mean, just me personally, about getting this process going.
Absolutely, I agree. I agree, it needs, we've never gone even to, that's what I'm saying, we're not at first phase yet. We're at, still at home plate waiting for, and discussing if it's a strike there involved. So we gotta, we do have to move forward, I agree, but I think that's the first step. I don't think the feasibility study is the first step.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but. There is a process in place currently, right, to get like an ad hoc committee together to start talking?
Okay. And, and just so everybody, sorry, Mike is, yeah, no, Mike is pulling this from, my understanding, you're pulling it from the C I P.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
You were even pulling it down, I was saying that we talked about.
Right, right, absolutely.
I'm, I'm on board with, with you, with you.
I almost said my spiel, because I've been talking to people since our meeting, it's like, well, I don't know if I have time for that, I don't know if I have time.
I know.
Yeah, let's put together a committee, all right, this day, you sit here and, okay, Mike, how you doing? What do you think it should go like that?
I know it's difficult, but will we be in that same boat?
Survey monkey time?
Ideally, you do it during.
All right, so we're just, no action needed on that.
Well, I mean, I feel bad about it though, because we, we need to.
Well, I mean, I feel bad about it though because we we need to show the village that it makes sense, but this is probably.
But I'm 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 trusting Cody that he's pulling a group together and he's gonna pull it off. Alright, it is keep going here. Alright, the next one is the pool filter replacement. Second, alright, I have a a motion and a second discussion.
Did they're, do you need to say anything about it? Like, are they gonna last and they can break?
Uh, we did fix the bottom filter. It's a short-term fit. We wanted to get through this season. However, with the current configuration that we have in there, we would need two filters, um, not just one. So that's why we have that. I would even also say like not to exceed number because that was only getting, I only got that number from one company. And I feel like we could reach out to other badger pools and new pools as well and give them an opportunity to to bid on this project. So it could be the last thing.
And those filters could be used at a new pool five years from now, correct?
They could, they could. So filters are set for last. I mean, providing you replace the sand. It was, I think it lasts you up to forty to fifty years. Not saying that they always will, but uh, so they could be used. I didn't have them oversized, different price down there a little bit, um, so then if our pool facility. Uh, was a little larger, that these filters, whole filters could be used to the rest of the city.
I mean, why? It sounds like a great idea. I can tell you that the new company that construction. Isn't gonna wanna put in used filters because they warranty everything. That just so you know, they they'll wanna put everything new in because.
Use for a splash pad or something.
Yeah, I mean, but I hear what you're saying, but I just wanna just point that out though. Alright, I have a motion. Any other discussion?
Uh, just I guess this one should be done. Prior to next swim season.
Yeah, so the filter area, they take out the old filters come with early winter here, so February, March. Uh, that leaves all. So that would be out in the new filter to be in early spring.
Okay, I just wanna make sure everyone having a Christmas tree issue where. I'm proving it now, but then, I'm sorry, holiday tree issue where you prove it now, but then you wouldn't be able to get it.
Okay. Alright, Michael, and you're replacing both the folders in there, like there's two there, two in there. Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Trusty elevator?
Yes.
Jesse Brown?
Yes.
Jesse Harton?
Yes.
Jesse Brunner?
Yes.
Jesse Burton?
Yes. 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 Alright, next one is replacement of the twenty twenty-one pit skid steer. Uh, Jerry, you wanna come up and. Talk about this?
The screen is halfway between. Skid steer replacement, this is the trade skid steers every two years. We can't afford to have a machine with very many hours on it or any possible. Issues or availability of issues. Uh, as an example, the tractor that we have. Six years old now. It has spent sixteen weeks so far this year at culture's implement. I'm waiting for parts. That is causing us some heartache with getting projects done, but if we not have a. Skid steer. We have to wreck one of those spaces.
So that our our process is every two years we do it because then it's under warranty and we don't have concerns with it going bad.
And we get a better traded back because we have one year warranty left that transfers to the future or.
Any questions for Jerry?
I would move to approve.
A second. Alright, I have a motion and second discussion.
Cameron, just so I understand this, I'm just. It's kind of like a lease because we're buying it and then just trading it in every two years. Right, right. We purchase it, but then we plan to always trade it in two years to, you know, get the.
That has evolved over the years. Twenty years ago, it was, actually was like. Uh, company programs have changed over the years.
Thanks, Michael.
I have a, this is, I'm all for doing this, it's just. I don't know. This goes into how this equipment is being funded. I know you don't wanna talk about funding, but this is essentially. A two-year lease program, but yet next year we're gonna borrow nineteen thousand dollars and it's gonna be in a bond in twenty years. I don't know if that's, we're gonna be doing this every two years.
Well, I I'm gonna make, it's not actually that. We're actually purchasing a vehicle which is clearly an asset. That asset is clearly, and I think we borrowed ten years, don't we? Mostly unless it's long-term, so it's ten years. That skid steer would last ten years. That is clearly falls under capital. Now, the difference is we have come up with a policy that we take our ownership. Trade it in to purchase a new one. They give us so much money for this and then we're paying the difference. So I hear what you're saying, but it clearly falls under capital. That is no doubt, okay.
I I understand that, but it's not like a capital thing where we're buying a pool and it's gonna be good for fifty years. It's, this is actually an asset that's being overturned every two years, so. It's not a permanent piece of capital. It's not a truck that's gonna have a twenty-year lifespan. I'm saying that we just need to reevaluate how we're purchasing it.
In the last thirty years, it's flipped from general levy to capital a half a dozen times at least. It always, it's entirely at the women's board.
Right, that's what I would understand, understand. Issue with not moving levy, you can do something where inside levy, you put a. Twenty thousand dollar catch-all, one year, you owes to pay for the skid steer, the next year that twenty thousand dollars goes to redo.
Are you proposing to change the policy today?
I'm not, I'm just throwing it out as an idea, but.
That'd be a discussion for a different evening.
But just letting people know.
But but I understand, but this doesn't go against the law. This is capital does not go against the levy. You take it out, put it in there, now we're twenty thousand closer to the levy. So i- if it's a legitimate capital, which I believe this falls, financially, it's better for it to be in capital. Which, yeah, again. But anyways, we we have this on it. Any other discussion on the purchase of this?
Just Cameron, sorry, Jerry, and then nineteen is the difference.
And it'll fluctuate a little bit. It might come in seventeen five. It all depends on the number of hours on the machine.
Alright, roll call vote please.
Trusty Brunner?
Yes.
Trusty elevator?
Yes.
Yes.
Jesse Brunner?
Yes.
Jesse Brown?
Yes.
Jesse Brown?
Yeah. Yes. Okay, the next item, again, has already been approved. This is just giving you the the structure of where the money. Is coming from. The ARPA is gonna be a little different because we don't have that much in it. Uh, but just so you know, this is what sewer. Uh, is gonna be borrowed and what's coming from the fund balance of it, so that, that we've already done, we're on our way. So the next one is the replaced tractor mounted snow blower.
This is the snow blower we use to, uh, primary use is to haul the snow up the streets. Uh, it is also used to a certain extent clearing sidewalks and paths. This is actually the first one that, um, we we bought one, the initial one. Twenty-five years ago. This is the first replacement purchase we're gonna have to do. The last two. We hit manholes while blowing snow and pulled out the last two and insurance replaced them, so. If, uh, if if that happens, we'll just consider it's all lucky. It's usually my forehead. When that happens, but, uh. Irregardless, uh, we need to get one ordered because of delivery availability, um. We're probably not gonna see this snow blower for use until, um, fall of twenty-three. So, but we're gonna have to try and get through this player when they're looking for it.
Jody?
Um, how old's the new year you to now?
Let's see, this, the one reason now I got total, um, the manhole. Okay, so it was prior to. Brand was driving it. So it's. Nine to ten years old. But what causes a lot of the problem is all that snow is full of salt and we wash it out for every event, but. You can't hear it all.
Alright, my emotion? They have a motion and second roll call please.
Jesse Brown?
Yes.
Jesse Burton?
Yes.
Yes.
Jesse elevator?
Yes.
Jesse Brunner?
Yeah. Yes, alright, we're at aerial lift purchase.
Uh, yeah, I've got a philosophical issue with leaving this one in the. In the C I P. It was about six thousand dollars we paid in rental.
Yeah, from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two through July was five thousand eight hundred. Plus a thousand for labor, so sixty-eight hundred.
Yeah, I don't know if, uh, we're at the point where we should. Uh, make the investment. We've been getting by with renting. It's not as convenient. Sometimes things have to wait for a while till, you know, we we can't just. Take the lift to go and fix it. Rope for a flag. We might have to wait till there's two or three jobs for it to rent it, but, uh.
What's your primary use for?
The biggest thing is trees. Or taking them down and trimming.
In Christmas light?
Holiday lights are another one, but that's three days a month and two days to take them down. Is there any cost departmental use of that? Well, we go all over to libraries up here, um, Mike uses it. Or not Mike, well, Mike sometimes, but Dane from Parks uses it in the parks, but. For tree trimming and stuff, but, uh. We 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 purchased the trailer, so we have a good reliable. Safe trailer to haul it on and we rented and, uh. Yeah, I I would not be against, uh, delaying this until there's more use in the future.
Could, can I ask you, when you gave those amounts, what was that time period? Was that like a one-year time?
It was all of twenty twenty-one and through July of twenty twenty-two.
So you're there. Okay, that's correct. So a year and a half, it was like five thousand dollars.
Uh, you look at labor, six thousand, well, six, six thousand eight.
Well, you labor, the labor I'm referring to is going to get it, taking it back.
Okay, so it's gonna, yeah, that's included in the expense, otherwise it'd be here if you wanted to use it. How far away is it along the trip to go?
Well, sometimes they're hard to find because they're booked up. Um, part of this who goes Dodge though. He's been the most consistent of having one available. Uh, try McFarlane's, but there's seems to be both more.
Does Reynolds stand on Reynolds? Reynolds off about line?
Yeah, I'm fine with renting because buying this is a ninety thousand dollars and depreciate.
Well, that ninety thousand is a two-year-old number.
Oh, so.
I don't know what it actually is.
So you're even better with it. Alright, everybody comfortable with moving on. Thank you, Jerry. Replacement of the two thousand three GMC pickup truck, ball crane truck, fuel, fuel truck.
Yeah, uh, the old GMC is, um. Uh, becoming the, well, it's actually already is. Other than to go from the shop down to the wastewater plant to get filled up and fill up a decent field. It really has left the shop in the last year. It's just not safe to drive.
Burn up, moved to broom and do a. More in a second.
I will second then.
Alright, discussion. Alright, roll call vote please.
Jesse Brunner?
Yes.
Jesse Harton?
Yeah.
Jesse Burton?
Yes.
Jesse Burton?
Yes.
Jesse Brown?
Yes.
Jesse elevator? Yes.
Yes. Alright, county highway KP bridge improvement.
That's underway, um. We're basically, it's the same as when Highway P Bridge was done, we're responsible for the. Sidewalk on one side and, uh. The decorative concrete, the form liners that make it look like cobblestones and the paint. Uh, otherwise it's going to be for the rest of the bridge.
See, when I, you know, I've seen so many of those bid sheets, seems like they come every six months for that for the last year and a half. I thought they were covering the sidewalk. That's the part that I'm confused on this. I know the decorative bridge, but I thought. On those bid sheets that they were doing the sidewalk. Were we responsible for the sidewalk or is it sidewalk off the bridge?
We gotta get to the bridge.
Oh, so it's a sidewalk going to the bridge?
Yeah, and a little crazy down there because we go.
Uh, okay, that makes.
But it's the approach is up and I did, uh, modify the. Or approved a modification to the plan. Regarding the other side of the bridge and guardrail versus the bucket. Storms are playing.
Oh. So.
I have Cameron, I have Cameron, then Michael, then Cody. So this is the lowest scoring from a staff part. I guess I was curious about that because you you said it's underway and like what if they're all. Not have sidewalk to the bridge and it's, so I'm just curious how it got four.
That might have been a user input error.
Yeah, that that should not be a four because that connector chunk of sidewalk and the sidewalk on the bridge. It's a huge policy.
Yeah, yeah, that that's what I'm saying.
Alright.
Yeah, that that was, uh, yeah.
Okay, Michael and Cody.
So it's just gonna have sidewalk on that one side.
Cause that's what we have the east side.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all, nothing on the left.
But it's gonna be wide all the way to main street then. It'll hit the sidewalk.
The sidewalk ends right now. There's right by this desbed and GE. You connect there and then it'll connect to where the boardwalk comes out.
Yep.
The other side, but I hope the iron matics is going.
So you won't have to walk in the street anymore.
Correct.
We'll take on assignments, so no walking. I'll make the motions vote.
I'll second it.
They have a motion in the second, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Let's see, Valer?
Yes.
Let's see, Brad?
Yes.
Let's see, Harman?
Yep.
Let's see, Marlon?
Yes.
Let's see, Paul and Rocky?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. All right, uh, the next one, we have already approved. And I think we've already got grant money for it, so it's just to let you know that the sewer. Fund will be using that from.
And that it's due to availability of. Components and stuff that's delayed.
Yeah.
Some of that will be wrapped up till twenty-three. Late twenty-three.
Okay, and then uh, you have the mixer that has twenty twenty-two on it, because I thought we approved that last year, didn't we?
That is correct, uh, and Sonic Country is working on getting uh, good documents off of that. Sway a meeting with Evan from Sonic Country and all the people on it.
So we don't need to take any action, I'm just to let you know that that'll be part of it. And then we have Brewery Road Sewer Main Replacement. Again, this is part of the big brewery road project. Been approved in the past, just showing uh, where the funds are coming from. Uh, the upgrade, SCAD system upgrade, now we're on the water side, that also has been. Approved and we have. Received loan money for that. Uh, Brewery Road Water Main, oops, I already said that, uh, well, number two rehab. Um, again, we borrowed on that. Do we know uh, when we're going to see the drawings and stuff? How, how that is gonna work with the new bathrooms? Yeah. Uh, have, have they drawn, I mean, have we seen the engineering work, I guess? For the. Okay, we're at Bear Park well two, where we took the bathrooms, turned one into the electrical.
Yeah, I know, the company has approved the.
Yeah, I know, we, we proved uh, rendering, have we actually got the engineering done?
I thought, I thought you proved the engineering.
Well, we approved the whole project. I just don't remember seeing the, the final. I remember seeing the rendering. But I didn't see the actual.
Remember we moved, moved the, you moved the.
Yeah, but I never, I never saw the end result of that. I got, I had, remember that discussion on the rendering, but I don't remember seeing the final, but I could be wrong. I just don't remember that. But it's been done, I take it?
Yeah, yes, it does. All the requests from board were incorporated.
Okay.
We can get your set of plans.
But, uh, do other people remember seeing it? I. Yeah, it'd be good if you could just bring it back as an information. I don't. That'd be great. All right, so I don't think we need to do anything else on that, do we? I mean, that's all, we've already borrowed on that. All right, paint the existing reservoir. I think we've already approved that, that we've gotten wastewater drinking loan on that. This one's a new one, the Park Street Water Main Replacement. Why don't you take people through that, Jerry?
Okay, so it's first the area, so it's water breaks within a little over a hundred feet. Uh, on Park Street. Immediately east of Market. The main, the water main, and I have some pictures, uh, if you wanna see what we're dealing with. But the water main was typical of the way it was installed back in fifty-six. We used to have the Highway fourteen. Issue that we got rid of. It's, it's essentially the same thing. The pipe was installed and it was not embedded correctly. The. Material within the glacial till. That is up against the pipe is causing corrosion from the outside going in. Literally eating its way through the pipe. This is a hotspot. We used to experience events like this on Park Street. And then one time we had three in one day. Uh, by the fire station. So anyway. The neighborhood is less than pleased. With the frequent interruptions. So I, I put in a dollar mark and proposing that we. Redo utilities under the block of Park Street from Market to Water. And then resurface it. As Park Street is. Done. That needs all the utilities under anyway, somewhere brewery road and um. It's just, this kinda rears out of the head and I think we have to deal with it. There's possibility we can maybe tie it in with contract for brewery road. As with some other projects we're looking at, um. But I had to put a placeholder in.
Okay, any questions for Jerry? I, I, I feel so, I, I received emails too, and these people are out of water for like six hours at a crack or more. Um, and that's six times in a very short period of time. I think we, this is one of those things I think we have to do with. One of those emergencies that come up.
Yeah, the water breaks. Can, not everyone, we had some that were only, you know, we're only a half, but they're off, but. Where the pipe is located underneath the um. T D S. Fiber conduit pack. Back in the seventies, it wasn't originally fiber optics, it was originally hard cables, copper cables. But they're now full of fiber optics. Um. Somebody approved them putting this conduit down Park Street. Basically right over top of the water. So we got this three by three block of concrete. Old pipes. Hanging there. And you're trying to work on the watering four feet below that. Sometimes it's not any fun.
Do I have a motion? Oh, I was just gonna, is that the way all of Park Street is? With that.
Yeah.
Block of T D S above the pipes there, so that doesn't contribute to the corrosion of the plate?
No, but that's just makes it. Sometimes very difficult to work with.
When this part, okay, go ahead, Michael and Cody.
And this block is where all the conduits are, the fibers, is what you're saying? Um, my only other question is. How is the rest of Park Street bearing if this is happening there? Is it all sort of going to eventually surface up for the same fate?
Yes. It's just a matter of time.
And I know that there's another brace a lot, so are they positive same thing? So any other area concerns experiences? This rapid decrease at any time as it depends?
Okay. Cody, when you eventually redo all of Park Street, can you do it to the side of where the?
Yes. The water rain off the underneath. Typically, when you redo a street, you'll shift the water rain. Away from its current location, so you can install the new. Hopefully keep the old one in service for residents to do the safe samples and. Then you title that, it's on to the new main and then it's open.
All right, do I have a motion? I motion through. I'm sorry. I have a motion in the second to uh, replace the exist, existing water main. Long Park Street from Market Street to Water Street. Any other discussion? Ms. Cameron?
We're doing this part reactionary because, I mean, there was something like, is there some other water mains? I mean, you just mentioned more of Park Street, it's just a matter of time that we should do it again more proactively.
Um, Park Street's on the list, it's out there a few years, but it was already on the list. Uh, this. Part of the reason I. I'm thinking this is a good way to go is that this is at the west end, which is also. Quote-unquote the low end as far as the storm sewer and sanitary sewer are concerned. So this is the logical location to start. And ultimately end up.
Michael?
Um. With, at one time we had had a uh. Stormwater plan that Bill Chang had worked on and it was talked about rebooting storm sewers and touched down at the end of that.
Uh, we kind of moved away, it's gonna be more, the last plan was more of a surface trench from behind, um.
Middle school.
Yeah, the middle school in P I, then it comes down and that, where Kelchers is, there would be some work in that field, but that. That's all ties to a lot of moving pieces. This should not affect that at all. I understand, but I, I was always asking, I wasn't sure if we're tearing up a road.
We will be doing the storm sewer as well, um, but. What we're doing with the storm sewer won't be relative to that emergency plan.
It's gonna be a standard ten-year replacement storm sewer, what's there right now?
Same as what they were up for, right?
Right, okay.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Let's see, Paul and Rocky?
Yes.
Let's see, you go with it.
Yeah.
Let's see, Runner?
Yes.
Let's see, Harman?
You?
Let's see, Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, they're just hanging on till we get through these two, but I have a question to mark which two. Well, not yet, it's not the one there, but I gotta do this, I wanna go in order, so. The next one is the fire station roof replacement. Um, it needs to be replaced, this is our share of it.
I make a motion to um, to the fire station roof replacement.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second discussion. Go ahead.
How old is the fire station over there?
Twelve years, the roof is twelve years old, but it's starting to lose. Suctions.
Yeah, it's not the whole roof, right? It's just over the other offices?
No, they're replacing the whole roof. Seventy, seventy-two thousand bucks. At this, at this point, it is, but at the meeting, people want him to look at putting a metal roof on, which would really. Yeah.
I thought I read somewhere it was just on the.
So I, we're not getting roll call, we're just gonna do a voice, we really don't have, say, fire district. All in fire, say. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. So the next one is the portable radio replacement. This is a two-year program. It'll be twenty-six thousand five hundred this year, and the same next year, the radios like the police radio. Can't get parts anymore. Uh, they're dated, they just need to be replaced, so we're doing it over a two-year period. This is our share. Of the cost of replacing.
Motion that we accept the portable radio replacement in the fire district.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same. Uh, Jerry, the one, the reason I want you to stay, what I did see on here is the. Funding that we'll need to do the parking lot agreement with Ace, we have that. Oh, you, and I know you were gonna hook it in with Brewery, is that already in Park Glory or is that gonna be?
I kind of forgot about it, to be honest with you.
Okay, well, we'll just have to bring it. We're gonna be talking, we're moving on to, tonight, because we've got a lot to cover. The rest of the years, we will move to the September meeting. Uh, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five and that, I don't think. We'll do that at September, but could you just kind of put something together so we know?
Yeah, I'll have to, it'll be a little bit of a split because we're trying to do some of it this fall.
Right, right, right.
And, yeah, I forgot about it.
All right, just so people know what I'm talking about is when Ace came in, we said, we did a memorandum of understanding. With them, and one of the things that we have is taking that outlaw and making it parking lot. Uh, half of it, so uh, with the plan is we're gonna try to get it to gravel. Uh, in-house, we're gonna do it, make it gravel. And we'll see if that's okay with them, and then at the end of next year, when we do Brewery Road, we'll go down in black. That's kind of what the, the plan is to merge them together, so we have that kind of a bit. Just so you guys are all familiar with it.
But Bernie, you're talking a little bit?
Okay, Ace, right across from Ace's front door, there's an outlaw.
Right.
And it has an actual name, I don't know what it is. Well, it says it's a park, but you can't, and I don't wanna go down that, it's. It, so anyways, yeah, Glacier, Glacier, so, so we're taking basically forty percent of it. And we're gonna make dirt where the gravel is, you know, where currently is, make that nice, and then. Where that, where we got the dirt from, that's gonna be gravel and blacktop where, where parking, so we're opening up the parking area there. And then they're gonna put their. All your greenhouse stuff on half of it. All right, very good, so we are gonna move on and we'll finish this up at uh. Uh, September meeting, so the next one is uh, discussion and possible action. Uh, regarding village crossing guard position, it's a chief on. You still here?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, we are struggling uh, getting a crossing guard. We've been trying to get one since last year. Um, last year I, I assigned um, our staff to handle the crossing guard position. I added extra staff to cover school zones, but that's just not, it's just not feasible with, with the amount of people that I have for staff. Um, I, I am however, uh, I do however have a meeting this Thursday with a potential crossing guard, so I, I. I wanna say that we're gonna continue to try to find one. Um, I did reach out to the school district and to give them plenty of time to, to notify the parents, because I, I think it's become. A well-crossed area where, where people pull into, on park, uh, park over on Bear uh, road and then cross across. Um, and I just don't want people to, to expect that we're gonna be there. Uh, there was several times that, that we were scheduled to be there, and then we had an emergency, like a crash on Main Street. And then we had to abandon that post, and that's part of the, part of the reason why that's a, a problem. Um, like I said, I'm gonna continue to try to fill that position, and I, I also reached out to the school district. And I know that they've posted the position to try to garner some more attention. I do have somebody coming in on Thursday, hopefully that works out, it's just. It's not about the money, I, I, I do believe that we could probably work on the twelve dollars an hour, but. It's really about the responsibility of splitting the day in half. We've also tried to just reach out to two separate people, you know, try to get two people, one in the morning, one in the, in the evening, and, and it's just, it is just has not worked out very well. But the one thing that I knew, know for sure is that the police department can't man that. Um, it's not sustainable and it's, and it's not in the best interest of the community. So I wanted to put that out to you guys and, and, and have you discuss it. Um, and maybe provide some ideas, I, I, I guess I, I'm looking for some ideas or, or at least some support that. Uh, we are not gonna man that, and you know, I do believe that the citizens will reach out to all of you and, and including our administrator. I just want the support because it's just not feasible.
So just to sum up, if you, right now, they have a half hour in the morning, a half hour in the night, in the afternoon, so you're doing these two half hours for twelve bucks a day. Understand why it's hard to find someone to do it. We need to have at least discussion on, we can't, I agree with the chief. You can't have it where you say we're gonna have law enforcement there, then they're not there. We have to go either we're gonna do it or we're not gonna do it. I don't think it's a good use of police resources to do that. Um, I, I think we should tell the school district, we no longer can, can do that and notify parents. It, I mean, you're talking about people doing something for six bucks, getting out to be there at seven forty-five to eight fifteen for six dollars. Yeah. Okay, Cameron?
Couple of things, I, I pull out of that area every morning during the school year, and there are a lot of kids who cross. Prairie there. And there are a lot of big trucks driving way too fast on Brute. It is dangerous. To not have anything. I mean, we have the lights there and stuff, but it's, it's. I, I would worry if we didn't have someone there. And just my second thing, I, I know, I don't know how we would do this on the village board. But when I went to school, the student, there was a, a staff. At the school who was responsible in the mornings and afternoon. For that and then the, the kids helped. So like, you know, it was like a, it was an assigned role thing. Um, like, is that something we can work with the school district on or not?
I don't think you've earned a life.
Good luck. Yeah, no, no, no. There was a, there was like a teacher.
Yeah, no, I know it. It was still the same in control.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, middle school, yeah. But way more than a.
Career in law enforcement, though, right?
Well, no, I was a kid.
Yeah, like you do a career.
Right, oh, there you go. Uh, here's, I, Cameron, I don't disagree with that, but the problem is. Unless we absolutely. Have two officers on and even so, those officers have to respond to emergency call. So we can't guarantee that they're gonna be there in those two time periods. And that's, that's where I'm. And parents are gonna think there's a police officer helping these kids. So. We, I don't know what the solution is.
No, I, I think the challenge. Is a half hour place of age and several times. So you know, when I was a kid too, it was a school staff or a retired person who helped block the recess too. But I do think. If there's staff positions that are six and a half hours a day, and then they move to seven and a half hours, you know what I mean? It's much, much easier to add on. To a position that's less than eight hours.
Well, you do not have any more position.
I'm not just saying school district. I'm not just saying school district. Yeah, I'm thinking creatively. Sure, there's different positioning. That have different amounts of hours and varying responsibilities where they're like.
Yeah, I hear you.
I'd say you think that's all I'm saying. Well, I'm thinking school district and or village and or anything. As long as duty, sorry.
I don't have, I, I think that there's a need for this and the blue, I, I think this. I don't have a problem with upping the rate honestly for twelve dollars, even if we went to twenty or whatever. I don't care how high it takes to get somebody really. From what's in one hour a day. Um, how have we posted work? Have we done it on social media? Like how?
It's been, it's been all over social media, all over school district emails. But I think the action we could take is the twenty hour because gee, but always needs.
Right.
I, I don't think that's a problem. I, I, I don't. Here, here's the thing. I personally don't think it's a money issue either. I mean, twenty bucks, that's twenty dollars you're making. For sticking around in the morning and sticking around in the afternoon for twenty bucks. Even if we did it to twenty, it just. You know, Monday through Friday, basically. I mean. I, I, I mean, that's where. You know, to me, I mean, we can try that if people want to.
Well, but I'm trying to know.
Well, yeah, absolutely. I don't have any, so you don't have anything to lose there because we're, we got no.
I mean, the hundred bucks a week at twenty dollars an hour. Somebody might think it's worth it because it's really, it is, I mean, you know.
And the right person might see it, and my, my, my person might see it and wants to.
Right, right. But I would like to see it also if, if we do find someone that will do it for a hundred dollars a week. And they are sick that they are, they go on vacation, then I would like to see that. If they can, create a backup or the teachers or somebody be a backup because I would like to see somebody.
Is there, how, how does the communication work between the village and the school district as far as like saying the prom rate? We want you to do X, Y, and Z.
Uh, I think it sounds like, chief, can you answer the question is what's the relationship with the school district and us with these positions? I thought they were all our positions, but the school district doesn't.
Okay, so I did reach out. They have a position within the uh, school district that deals with crossing guards and. The crossing guard position is a staff position with the police department. That's the way it is. All over. So even Madison is having trouble finding crossing guards for their much more busier streets. Um, that. Basically what they will do is they will uh. Advertise for the position. They will even pay the position, but then much like our SRO, we have to reimburse them for what they're paying. A while back, uh, when, when Tom was the chief, I think that that was kind of what he was looking at when, right before they added. Uh, Blue was to have the school district take it over and the school district will not take it over. They basically will. Uh, find someone or try to find someone and then you're at the mercy of whatever ra- rate that they're paying at that given time. So. Um, if Middleton has an increase, then we would have to have an increase. And I think that's why Tom pulled it out. And ultimately he got lucky because he had Blue. Now, Blue wasn't there the whole time. Uh, Blue was, uh, only, uh, did the school, uh, crossing guard. Till November and then he would not come back till March. So from November to March, there was no crossing guard. I think what you're, the reason why everybody's seen such an increase is because. Since I've taken over and since after COVID, we have definitely had someone there and I've made a commitment to have someone there. So people. Are not driving in to drop their kids off anymore. They are kind of shortcutting and dropping kids off. Away from the school so they can get in and out quicker and that's what's creating the influx of kids. Um, when I, when Blue was alive, I, I spoke to Blue on several occasions and he multiple times said sometimes, you know, he may see. Five, ten, fifteen kids at best. Now we're seeing in the ballpark about thirty kids. So I think it's just. Because we're always there, include, we were even there during the winter. Um, I think that, that people have gotten used to it. So now it's. You know, that's why they're crossing. That's why I thought, I mean, it's definitely something the police should not be doing because we cannot commit to being there. Um, we had a couple of head-on collisions on Main Street. That took our staff away from there, leaving that spot open. So if you're a parent, you're dropping someone off or expecting your kid to walk there and then all of a sudden to learn that the police weren't there. I think it just opens us up for a liability. More so than anything. I, I just don't see it as something I can sustain. Plus, I, I just don't have the staff to do that. Um, to, to specifically keep them there. So, so I, I hope that answered the question.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Doug, obviously it's a big challenge. One of the biggest challenges because of, on a busy road and they all cross at one point. The answer. Would be to do something on the backside of Glacier Creek where the. Gravel road is that way kids could walk from followback street. Go back without much traffic. And, and, yeah, but I know, I understand you. It's not locked. So PI owns that. I don't know if it's worth asking. It's a gravel road that literally they could walk right to school without touching feet. And the parents could drop them off back there. It would be a lot quieter and, and it's kind of a problem of how the school was grown and how the traffic has grown and. I know it's a cluster. Um, but if, if there's some kind of opportunity. That have a different entrance or a way they can walk somewhere else besides crossing key, it wouldn't be a.
Try. I just want to point out that's interesting because the planning commission for totally different reasons brought up that same thing. And if there was a vector to annex just that part. Down to Ever, right? Because you not even got that road over by my house that, that would like connect. You don't have to take everything, but you could get. Just that chunk and put a road there. You'd make the school happy and you might solve, well, help solve the safety issue.
Andy, I'm just wondering if there's a technology that's with this, like just a, a, you know, like a, a crossing walk. Like situation.
Probably already one there. There's a big rainbow, yellow circles.
That's also.
You can come along and watch that.
No, they don't. So, but here's the thing, I, we, we gotta. Do people have an interest in looking at just. Handing this to the school district and let them do it and then we reimburse them because. I, I think there's a couple of issues. I hear that we wanna get someone there, but then on the other hand. I'm not sure it's worth. If, I don't think it's good resources to put an officer there. I mean, you know. You know, almost everybody else has civilians doing uh. Uh, crossing. So I think we have to go that route, you know, to me. So is that something people, and I don't know what the current rate is, but like you say, it's. Just one hour per day.
What, twelve bucks an hour?
Well, I'm sure it is, but it'd be more than twenty, you think?
Uh. Something like that.
Twenty, twenty-five a day. If they're gonna do both shifts.
Yeah. Well, that's only a half hour per day.
But that's what the district is gonna charge you. They're not gonna pay that person thirty bucks a day or thirty dollars an hour or whatever it is. They're not gonna pay that to the person. They're just gonna say, hey, who's your new job? Um, if you went to the school and said you could come acquire.
You mean they would have assigned it to the teacher?
They would sign.
I mean, there's a soccer driver over there.
It's thirty to six when they have all or whoever. I mean, they would probably give this a picture. Standard rate, if they have a six and a half hour a day job of a fair educated. Assuming that we actually have an. But I, I don't know.
Okay, how about this? Just to move this on, one of them, the chief and I. Do a little bit of research on what these are. So we have something to look at for numbers. And what. I, I think what you guys should be thinking about, we'll bring it back next month, is one, do you think officers should be assigned to this? Two. What? If that's not the case and we can't get the school district, do we just wash our hands of it? And. You know, these are the things we have to kind of think about.
Well, we, we know who owns that land too. Is it worth asking?
Oh, we can try that. I, I just don't think, I just don't think we can pull that off within the next couple of weeks.
Right.
That's, that's, I, I think he's bringing it up because the school year starts in a couple of weeks. So. We've got to kind of resolve this because he wants to tell the school and let them notify parents that there isn't gonna be an officer there. You know, or that the school district is gonna try to fill it and now it's their responsibility. I mean, we gotta, we're gonna have to look at the.
We red, red, blue.
Yeah, I'd love to. Or do I love to do that? All right, uh, chief, does that work for you?
Yeah, that works fine. I, I think we can. One way or another, we need to have a decision. I guess is the consensus of the board that somebody be there. Till we. Um, discuss it again, end of September. Because if that's the case, that's gonna be a month's worth of. Commitment. To have, you know, some double coverage during the days, which we don't normally have.
To a school, you, you have to have some of that.
I get, are you hearing that? I think people are thinking we should have someone there the first couple of weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
If, if, if it's possible.
Permissive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just because that. All right. First two. And then you and I could talk about it. What we can do is just get a report written up for the board on the options and the pros and cons.
Sounds good.
All right, um, here at discussion and possible action. Uh, Dane County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution. It's in your packet. Last time we approved our plan and what they wanted us to do is also improve the greater picture of Dane County. So. Um. Someone wanna make a motion on that?
I'll make the motion that we approve, um, the Dane County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution.
Yeah, I'll second that. All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, all opposed, same. All right, uh, number six, discussion and possible action. Uh, village water utility billing. Cameron, I'll let you go through your PowerPoint on that.
Got it. Yeah, okay, so, um, well, unless you wanna go through.
Oh, you want me to go first? Okay, so, uh, if you remember. It's either a couple of months ago, Cameron, uh, brought up the, the idea of the problem solving. On the utility, uh, the water bill when people water or people come in for um, adjustment. Uh, he brought up New Clare, um, billing model. So that was sent to uh, finance and to sustainability. Can you just move up on that? So, uh, we were given the data, um, from the billing. You can. Uh, see the dates and everything. Um, what their system does is they look at the sewer usage during the winter. Uh, December, January, February, February. I don't remember the exact month. Uh, that is the, then the standard that you use for the rest of the year. Anything over that. Goes charged just to water. So we took the actual overall billing of the. The village. And you can see the numbers that we would be, and I just, we just did the summer months figuring that's the largest. Time when people would be filling pools and watering gardens and lawns. Uh, and you can see where, uh, the shortage of using, if we had done this. Uh, last year, uh, would have been basically. Uh, those numbers in red, eight thousand, eight thousand, three thousand, which is fifteen percent, sixteen percent, seven percent.
Which is, is that for household?
No, that's for the whole village.
Okay.
Just rounding that. We did total usage of those months for sewer and then total usage. Uh. Uh, it was, uh, so it kind of talks about it in the last paragraph while. Um, it's not a true, uh, direct. Um. Cost to water. There are people, there's a hundred, a hundred ninety-two homes that have that second meter. If we went to the system, there would be no purpose to have that. Then we would lose the revenue on that, which is nine fifty per month. So it's a hundred and fourteen. So that would be the water utility would lose about twenty-one thousand. Eight eighty over whatever years people chose. It wouldn't all happen at one time and that's like. Uh, so if we can go up a little bit, sustainability was just to do what they thought the philosophy of our water usage is. And this is what they came up for, for that. So now we can go into.
Okay, um. Just the water. So I did a little more independent digging on this because I, you know, I saw the costs, um, from the finance committee and, you know, I can recall that it was cost. Something, um, so I just. I put together a program, um, and I throw in the data for water, um, usage, you know, the, the all the fire, the sewage runoff. You know, all the flat costs, you know, your base sewer, your base water and then your rate. And then I just run it for three thousand gallons of water, which is. Slightly above the average of a residential household, but the ground numbers make it, uh, nice. Um, and obviously you can see we are the long, the, or the highest, um, cost for water sewage, um, across a bunch of places. I love that. And I've since even added to this. So there's even more municipalities in there and we're still the highest. So. Um, you know, we got a problem, obviously, you know, our water sewage costs are very high relative to. Hey, I can't, I can't find some. Um. The other, and so. If you wanted to use outdoor water, especially in summer months, and where we find where this. Or cropped up originally was new home developments, right? You know, they're coming back to us and they're wanting. Um, you know, some sort of adjustment to their water bill because they just spent either nine hundred dollars establishing their yard. Um. If you want to avoid that, you know, eat that or just watering your yard in general or using, um. A, a pool for your kids or whatever. If you didn't wanna be charged that sewage that was going outside in the summer months. Your only option is the second irrigation meter, which, um, at least mine a few years ago, costs five hundred dollars to install. There's an additional nine fifty a fee, uh, month. Uh. Fee per month. And then also, uh, the water rate is higher on that second meter than it is the first meter. Um, and then, um, you know, I worked with Becky, it's very hard, if not impossible at this very moment, if you even wanted to pursue this option. You can't. We don't have enough. Uh, meters here to do that. And we were also holding a large chunk of them for your developments, right? And because of, uh, shortages and whatnot, we just haven't been able to get them here. So. Someone who even wants to do that, right? Um, so the proposal, and again, this kind of started with establishing the yards, but as I, I thought more about this, um, you know, I think. This makes kind of a lot of sense. Um, saves residents money on water and sewage for an already very high bill and curbing sexual gardens, flowers for pollinators, et cetera. Does not penalize residents for child of, for pool use and you're washing your car and then more fairly allows new homes to establish yards. Um, you know, we can use stuff around like using the village average in winter as your sewage if you were moving in, you know. For, for what we, you know, instead of adjusting everyone's water bill. Um, the challenges again pointed out, um, in the previous thing, um. Well, I guess it's, it's less of an unknown cost now, uh, you know, we have the data showing it's, it's gonna be what about eight thousand dollars a year? Was that?
No, no.
A month?
Yeah, for a month.
Okay, so there's lost. Revenue of eight thousand dollars a month if we were to do this. Um, but I don't think, you know, I didn't see like options for what to cover that. So that would be something that, you know, before we. You know, kill this forever. I'd like to go over Bob, Bobby, like how do we, how do we backfill that, that cost? Does that just mean water rates go up? Is there, is there something else we can do? I don't know. And then obviously the other challenge is the state. And then obviously the other challenge is the sustainability committee, I think with their kind of overall water statement, uh, probably don't support something like this. Um, but I also did want to point out, um, from their sustainability plan, um, one of their key goals is to update ordinance. Ordinances related to urban agriculture to enable more food grown within the village. And it seems reasonable to me, if you wanted to build our vegetable gardens and not pay more than like for them, it would be nice if, you know, you had a droughty summer that you could water it yourself. Um, and then not be charged with sewage for that. I also put out a survey question to the community, um, that's the question, um, I won't reread it, I just wanted to kind of show that I was trying to be as fair as possible and make it as clear as possible. Um, I even gave an example, um, and then you can scroll down and you can see some of the results. Um, from the question here. Um, see, can I just ask, who did you send it? I sent it, I put it out on the, um, what's going on in Cross Plains Facebook group? That's the only easy way I know to get a survey out to a large amount of people.
And how, what, what's your?
I thought the post reach was like over eight hundred people.
Eight hundred?
Yeah, he thought I was.
There's plenty of people, five percent of people want to pay less money. Shocking.
No, okay, well, hang on, so, so out of that, eight hundred. How many surveys were returned?
Sixty.
Sixty, okay.
Um. But, yes, I mean, if you thought my question was unfair, we can, we can talk about it, but i- 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 not only that, there's a bunch of, you can scroll down, I had a section on there optionally in the survey. You know, just for community comments, I mean, I just picked a bunch of the positive ones for this slide, right? I mean, there's a lot, there was a ton of them that were just like, this seems reasonable. I mean, this makes sense, there are lots of people, I don't think it was like a boss thing, or just like, oh yeah, that kind of makes sense, why, why shouldn't you be charged sewage for, you know, water going outside? And then to be fair, I did include, um, the, the comments that had, uh, concerns, so you can scroll down to the next slide. Um, and this just adds the more negative comments, obviously there's some concern about, oh, don't do this, my water rate is just going to go up to cover it. Um, you know, I'm, you know, some people opposed to watering lawns, period, we should be encouraging the use of rain barrels and natural lawns, that's, that's all fine, so. Um, you can, you can read through them here, there in the package, these are some of the negative comments I received from, from the survey. Uh, so fairly showing all sides. And then final thoughts, I just, like, this, uh, this thing here is obviously not the solution to. Our high water and sewage costs, I mean, I am continuing to put data into my program, it's. It's just foreign to me that I can't find a community with higher water and sewage costs than us. Um, so I think there's something larger, you know, I had, I talked with Bobby, um, you know, earlier this week, just kind of like why that is and what's going on there, and like, I understand there's a lot of things that are in control, but that is just, I think something the board should. Keep our eye, oh, finish, I can keep our eye on, but this would help. You know, this kind of the final thing, so I would encourage that we continue to research this change and identify more solutions to our cost of water and sewage for residents if they're possible.
So, my understanding, and one I've talked to Jerry in the past. Is the biggest reason is because we're kind of on a home, it's treating them standard. So the DNR will not come to us to join Madison Natural Sewage, which, why do the board as well, all these communities, you know, to scale stages. And then same with Iowa County, they won't let us come there, so I mean, that's, that's something that when I hear a lot of groups, I get to share that, but hey, we're trying to cut it off the room. Black Earth Street, that's, that's one of the biggest things that is hard, and the hard round of the whole problem is that we don't have more and more. If we had a pipe going that way, it would save us all a lot of work.
I agree.
That, when, on your scale, did you take in the communities that charge for stormwater?
Yes.
You incorporated them?
I incorporated all stormwater, the only exception on that is Madison, because they have a weird one that's based on the square footage of your lot. So I couldn't really incorporate that into the program, but everyone else, if they had stormwater, it was just a flat per house rate, and that was all included.
Well, that's because I saw Claire was charging sixteen fifty for stormwater.
I will provide you the.
No, I, I just, no, remember looking at that particular one, and that, well, me, it was, I thought.
They also are a cost quarterly.
Yeah.
So I divided that by three then. To get a monthly, everything there was regular, normalized for a monthly charge.
Oh, gotcha.
I applaud your efforts in doing that, you know, especially so it's stupid the way the building is, since I.
There was some strong opinions that came through on survey, which is good.
I, I would also second that, thank, thank you for. Oh, I will put this to you, one of my neighbors has two gardens that have the same plants in it. And he uses rainwater runoff for one and tap water for the other, and the size of the fruits and vegetables that grow without the tap water. Is like exponentially bigger. The leaves are better, so, I mean, I definitely push the stormwater here.
And I guess for next step, I don't have a problem if you look into it and come up with some solution. Um, but I don't, I'm not sure what you're looking at, what you want. From tonight.
I guess what I'm looking for tonight is, is. Does the board want to continue looking into this? Or do we not care, and we should just. I mean, because, uh, we know it's going to cost money, right? What is being proposed here is, uh, you know, a hit to our water and sewage revenue and stuff, and I guess I would want to know. What are our options? For covering that?
Well, I agree, but I, I think, to me, it gets even greater, what you're asking for is for the greater to cover the usage of the few. That's how I'm looking at it, and I'm a firm believer in user cost, so if you have a pool. Yes, there's a cost to using water in that pool. I'm not sure why I should be paying more so you can do that, that's just that whole argument on. What is the general, the best for the general versus user fees? So, that would be one hurdle for me, and I'm with Cody. This whole thing of watering gardens, people should be using rain barrels, because not only. Does that help with that, but it reduces the runoff that's going into the crib. And there was something that they did in Middleton, if everybody had a rain guard, even if you didn't have a garden, after rain, then just had it. The next day, water, you're, you know, just go on to your lawn, something like fifty-five million gallons of water would not be going into. Crips and stuff like that.
There was a program in there giving out.
Yeah.
And they went, because. We got through Middleton.
Yeah.
Man, that's possible, it's not over.
Well, so I mean, that would be the other thing, I mean, so if the board wants to push that and stuff, like, what are we doing about that?
But I, what I do, because I, 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 I know Doug has hit. The one thing with sewer. Clearly sewer, because we maintain our own sewer, and I was on the board when we decided. Build a new one or try to hook into Madison was just not feasible because of. Of the plumbing and everything. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't remember that part, I just remember it would just, it just wasn't really feasible. Now, the water's still a surprise to me, I'm not really sure the history on the water side of it. Because, again, you would think everybody gets free water, so it's a matter of how do you get it out of the water, and how do you get it to home? Is the cost, right? You're not paying for material, so, I mean, I have no problem digging into that deeper on why it is, but you can see the cost of the well, the cost of. In a reservoir and.
Our water rate isn't. The one that kills us.
Oh, it's not?
It's our.
Oh, okay.
This, you know.
Oh, okay.
Could we be charging people? Our most premium water. Piece of our water building. For water going outside. And if the answer to no, is noted that, obviously there's a cost, but then I want to know what are options for that?
Right, Michael.
I mean, I've done some analysis on the irrigation meters. And so if we produce something where you move the irrigation meter, people who have irrigation meters, seventy-five percent of them are supplementing the water. That's not, only twenty-five percent of the users are actually benefiting from them. So those people are paying more money to the water system, keeping down water rates for everybody else. Essentially what's happening with the irrigation meters. Now, with regard to the sewer usage, because I was on finance and this was the finance, I asked Jay for the twelve months. That he used to calculate the numbers from a war of eight thousand dollars reduction. If I remember correctly, January could be marked with two of the three lowest sewer usage months in the entire year. So you're taking an average from the lowest one, so every single one is going to be practically, because when you, because when I started to expand it, I was like. Oh, let me use November, December intact paper on there, those numbers got a lot less because the average came up, if you start in. June, July, and August for the three highest sewer usage months. So you're always going to have a negative on there, like, I cannot get it where it went. Not like black in those months, like, the, and they, and they were substantially larger than a lot of the other ones. So. Should you move to a system like this? You're going to remove the irrigation meter, which means your water rate is going to go up, and. Your sewer rate is going to, because users are always paying for water, like, that was built in. So I'm just, I'm just throwing it out, like, you're going to see a water rate increase, and you're going to have a sewer rating.
And that's the thing I don't know, is that the only solution? Like, I don't know.
Well, it would be, but, but the analysis then would be that if somebody is running. Two thousand gallons outside, not only being filled up with water, and how much does the sewer rate increase? Actually affect that bill I get, because then you're removing that from that. Two thousand dollars, they're going to start making mock bills of. You know, so you're using three thousand dollars outside, and they're going to pay sewer on that, but to make up for that revenue, you have to increase the sewer cost, there's a lot of moving parts inside the model, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, dude.
I, I know I was being super passive aggressive, Cameron, with that comment about your question, but. Um, I, I do appreciate all the research you put into this. Um, a- and just like. The anecdotal. Comments, would very fun to read as well. Uh, but the sustainability committee categorically is like. We don't want to enhance the ability of people to water lawns and fill swimming pools. Like, that's the bottom line.
I would challenge the sustainability community to look at their sustainability plan, because it clearly wants to encourage urban parking. This seems like something that would encourage urban parking, I understand we prefer rain barrels. But they did sell out like instantly when they were available at a discounted rate, and they're expensive at full price.
Apparently Dane County is.
If we find a way to make it easier for people to get rain barrels, great, I'm not opposed to that.
But that, that's, that's the position.
Sure.
All right, so I guess, I, I would, I think what we'll do is, if you want to. Continue to work on other options, I think. Uh, there's limited because they're utilities, so they're enterprising. Um. Basically, agencies are fun, so you got to work within them. But that, you know what I'm saying, that's something to, to look at.
So that's the thing I don't know how to do, which is why I would need. Your guys' support in, you know, getting some Bobby's time, or Becky's time, or someone to be running the numbers and, and the backfill options, because I have no idea what they.
Yeah, I, 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 I think I would be willing to work with you on that. Um, and we can look at things, but I think, uh. I'm feeling that most people don't want to increase other people's or encourage more watering, so, I mean, but we can look at. Options, if there are out there, so.
And if we don't do that, that's fine, but then I would like to circle back to the seventy-five percent of people who have second meters and who are currently. Keeping water rates lower, right, because they're not getting the benefit there, so there's, I mean, they opted in, but there's something there, and.
There's only a hundred and fourteen or a hundred and ninety-two of them.
And then what do we do?
There's probably one last, because I had, I pulled mine, so.
And then what do we do with new developments then? Can we just, is there a policy, you're just always paying the sewage, you're just having a yard?
What ticks you off?
We always lower their, when they come to a sample.
Well, no, but, but see, that's a different thing, so the question is. I, I don't think you change the billing system to solve that problem, because we see what, one or, we maybe see a half dozen a year. I think what we have to do is educate or put something in, uh, developers agreement. That puts it out there so they know.
Well, and we've talked about that, I think that's insufficient, no one reads all of the documentation that comes to the house, so, then I would just say we should have a policy or something.
Yeah.
I can find that she said.
Well, well anyways, let's, uh. I, I appreciate what you did on that, it was good information, and it's great that people are taking and trying to do some problem solving. So kudos to that. So number seven, discussion and possible action regarding recreation of village ordinance sixty-five point zero seven, special ground disturbing timeline. The plan, here's what we have here, it's just one of those oversight where we changed it in the zoning code. And we didn't realize it was in the erosion. Code, so what, what this does is basically marry the two on the date, so if. The old one said September fifteenth, if you remember, October twenty-fifth. We passed where we moved, where you can work outside the right of way till September thirtieth, inside the road, roadway till October thirty-first. That's what it says in our zoning code, it didn't carry over to, uh, the, um. Erosion control, so that's all we're doing, is making sure that they marry up. So, I have a motion, a motion to approve is presented.
With the Liz Orin sixty-five point oh seven, right?
Yeah. All right, I have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? All right, thank you, discussion, village, long-term facility and staffing planning, we're not going to do much on this tonight. There will be an assignment from this. This is, uh, I've been trying for probably the last two years to start a strategic planning. Uh, effort for long-term facilities and staffing needs of the village. So I thought the best place to start was with village staff, the management team. So they went through an exercise where they all talked about what the future needs are for facility and for staffing. They ranked down, gave justification, and, um. Potential costs and stuff. So that's step one, so you have that. So what I would like for the next meeting, to you to look over that, think about what. Uh, items might not be on that list that you think falls into that, into one of those two categories. And then we will start discussing these items and come up with our ranking. To let you know the third step, once that's done, then Bobby, Brian, and I will look at the financial part and try to put a financial timeline on. Uh, being able to, uh, follow through with these, with these items. So unless you have questions on the process, that was there just to start the discussion that this is where, uh, the management team of the village is coming from. Do you want us to rank stuff, or you just want us to come apart and talk? I think the first one, let's just talk, okay? Because I think there'll be things that we might want to do some research on before we rank, and you definitely want to have all the information. So the idea is to look this over, feel free to contact staff if you have questions on what they've written up. Or you don't understand how it is.
And that's again next month.
Next month, I'm asking you guys to at least come with questions and stuff, and then the October meeting, I'm hoping to do the ranking. And then in January, February, we'll have the finance part of it put together. And then that way, the village has a strategic pathway to the future. Does that make, uh, sense for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Very good. All right, uh, number nine, discussion and possible action regarding village grant policy. Um, you all received an email that there was some confusion on some monies that came in. Um. And wanting guidance, um, so. I put this together, but I'm not going to take credit that I actually wrote it, because I really stole it from a number of other, other policies and did a cut and paste. It's been sent to staff, uh. I only received one comment, and, uh, basically it ended up that they thought it was okay. There, there, there were some questions on all the different definitions, but I thought it was important.
Um, I guess I'd be curious on why they thought it okay, maybe I'm misunderstanding this, because what concerned me there is the grants portion here.
Okay.
Um, and again, maybe, maybe this is just me misunderstanding. The, how things are supposed to work here, but. If we need to approve all the brands. Would that not potentially decentivize our leaders here from finding them or no?
First of all, it doesn't say that we approve all grants. What it says.
Okay.
That's the difference. We need to approve revenue and grant, I mean, I have revenue and expenses, that's our job by state statute and ordinance, okay? So let me give you an example, we did one today, so we approved Mike to buy, let's just say we didn't. I'm going to use a different example, the snow blower. Okay, so we approved ninety to twenty thousand to buy the snow blower. If Jerry sees somewhere where there's a grant that he can run to pay for fifteen thousand, that, he can go ahead and do it, no approval, because we approved the expense. Okay, so what this board has to do is approve, now, this is very liberal compared to a lot of. So what this board has to do is approve, now, this is very liberal compared to a lot of policy. A lot of policies in communities have it where before you can apply, you need approval from the board. I don't think you need, should need to do that, there's the one thousand, there's a lot of grants, and I just brought one up. Uh, the league of municipality, you can go and apply for a four hundred dollar grant to get safety equipment. And they basically give it to everybody. Doesn't need to be approved by us, okay? Um, if you, if the police department sees a grant. That is for motorcycles, then I believe it needs to come to the board, because that's kind of a policy issue. Do we want our cops on motorcycles, there's a lot of extra things to think about. What is the problem we're trying to solve here? The problem is, if you were to read the chief's email, is that his understanding of how. Grants work is different than what. In mo- in, in most cases, I think my problem here is in the purpose statement of this.
The coordination of the village staff and village board thereby increasing grant-related revenue, limiting the village exposure to grant-related legal liability, what the hell was that? Why would any grants make us liable? If, if our, if our, if our department heads are going out and.
Okay, here, I'll give you, I'll answer your question, here's the, the question. The chief goes, I'll apply for cops funding for cops, they pay hundred percent the first year, seventy-five percent the second. Fifty percent the third, the liability for us is we gotta come up with the twenty-five percent.
Legal liability, Jay.
I don't say legal.
It says legal right there in the statement.
Okay, well, we can take that off, the liability, well, I, it's, that's not about, this is what attorneys have written, okay? The legal liability is, once we take the grant, we are obligated to fit that money in legally.
But if that was the case, the chief would have to come before the board to get approval to spend that money, because we'd be liable to spend more money in the long term.
But we don't have, the, the, the policy says that now, but we don't have a policy. That's exactly right.
I feel like we're, I feel like we're, we're solving a problem that doesn't exist.
Well, the chief sent you a very detailed email asking for guidance. That's what he said, I wanna do my job and I want guidance, I think we need when people come here, this is our policy on grants. Everybody, even nonprofits have, I can't think of anybody that doesn't have a policy, I think, uh. And I'm not sure they didn't have a policy, I know there was resistance to an ordinance, and I've never, would never put an ordinance down.
Why would you make it more difficult for our deployment heads to go get free money?
How is this more difficult?
You're putting something in place that legally says right there, limiting the village exposure to grant-related legal liability, you're just.
Okay, if we want that removed, I have no problem with.
Putting roadblocks in what?
There's no roadblock here. Let's, let's eliminate the purpose then, if you don't wanna, let me ask you, does the process work for you?
Yeah.
Oh, purpose does not, okay. Yeah, anybody else on, on, on that, I don't, I don't need to have purpose on a policy.
Cameron. I'm still, so, I guess another example that I ran into when I worked in IT for the city of Oakley, right? Like, my boss got like an email that was like ergonomic chairs, you know, for IT department or whatever, and. You know, two weeks left for the granting, so he like filled it out and we did get it, so I mean, there is, like, how would that work if something happened to Denver? Would we have to wait till the next board meeting to like, talk about that, or no?
Are, are we, do we have, had there been approved to buy chairs?
Let's assume not.
Well, that, that, that's my question, then, yes, then the revenue would have to be come again.
Totally against that. Hundred percent.
Andy, the whole question I have is, how do you know what they're gonna do if it does, we're the people who are in charge of that. So maybe chairs, you don't have a problem, would you have a problem if there was a helicopter?
Of course.
Okay, then I.
There's policy, man, you're comparing apples and oranges.
No, it's a grant, we're, I'm trying to, where's the apples and oranges? It's a grand policy.
If we decide to have a helicopter.
That's a different policy, but, but.
That's an ordinance, that is a, that's something completely different than buying ergonomic chairs.
So what, what, you apply for a grant for a helicopter?
Yeah, I just tried to.
He wouldn't apply for a grant for a helicopter, because you'd have to come to us to actually have a helicopter in the first place. But this doesn't make any sense.
Talking about the sign that he wanted.
Okay, give that example. The example that the chief did, we, there was some ARPA money. As everybody know, we got ARPA money, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand general. The county or the state, I don't remember, had extra ARPA money, so what they did is they said, for every police officer. That you have, we'll give you a dollar a month. So the, the village received ninety-three hundred dollars or something like that in ARPA funds. But this one had more restrictions that it had to be used for somewhat law enforcement, but. It could be for community outreach, it could be for crime prevention, it could be for overtime, it had a number of options. All right, my feeling is that before that money was spent, I felt that the board should have some say. In it, so the money was given to us. I think the chief should have done a proposal, this is mine, brought it to the board and saying, this is the money we got. And you all received the notification that we received the nine, ninety-three hundred, that this is where I'd like to spend. He felt that he could just spend it because there was, there was no guidance to tell him that he couldn't. So he wanted to spend it on this speedboard and this, not that they were bad things, but it's just brought the issue up. That. What is our policy on grants, now I'm open for it, but I think we need a written policy. I've never heard of just a free-for-all, Judy.
I don't have a grant, if he, if, if it was earmarked for the police to do whatever, 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 and you and Judy for whatever, whatever, whatever. One of those options, I don't feel like I need to be, I don't feel like she needs to come to me, I trust him as a department head, and he got this free money. I, I agree, if it's, if it's a match, you better come to us first, because before you're ready, before we start matching fifty thousand or a hundred thousand. But this kind of to me is more free money into that department. If, if Mike gets a parks, if he gets a grant for fifty thousand for Mark, I say take it, it's a grant, give it. And yeah, and then if he, he would probably, no, if it's that big of a dollar, he'll probably say to us, I mean, you did it in a lovely birthway, I mean, whatever, but I feel like. And, and if there's only two weeks to do it, take that money, I don't want him to have to wait four weeks to come to us, and then we don't have a meeting. We, I don't know, I have, I don't have.
I like, I, I dislike everything under the grants, everything.
On the revenue and on the expenses need to be approved by the village board, no.
Okay, I just, I'm gonna make again a comment, because I've done this before, please do not use that. If someone disagrees with something, that they don't trust somebody. This has nothing to do with trust, it has to do, well, it's been said twice tonight. Well, earlier on, you said it once before earlier, here's the thing, because if you trust them now, and then later on you vote against them. Are you saying you don't trust them now, I mean, so let's not use the word trust, I mean, we are staff. We all have faith in them being able to do their job and everything, this was a request to have some guidance. Now, if someone else wants to take a shot at it, I think it's totally inappropriate not to have a policy. Show me, uh, the school district or anybody that doesn't have, and I am telling you.
I apply for grants all the time, give them for free, I'm traveling to South Africa in July for free. And my district didn't tell me that I have to take that money to South Africa and give it to them for approval first.
Cameron.
Tony wanted to speak too, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll just, I agree with you that having like a policy in place. It is good, I just, I, I, I don't want to prevent a free money grant from, from happening, because we become a blocker there. I'll just pick on the motorcade example, just so I understand, you're saying because there'd be. Uh, you said motorcycles, right? I guess if you're concerned there, that's, you know, someone would go get that, and then we have to continue to like finance them, so that, that's what.
Well, there's also, if you look at statistics, motorcycles are extremely dangerous for cops to ride. So there's a higher likelihood of them getting a worker's job, that I'm gonna get killed, is it appropriate in the village, because. All of a sudden, our cops are on motorcycle, people are gonna ask you, what the heck's going on, and you're gonna say, I don't know, the chief just went out and bought them. And everybody's comfortable with that? I don't know, and I'm looking at Doug's sign, I mean, he went out and got private, but they could have used all the money. From that grant, and all of a sudden, we're walking around the neighborhood, and we see these signs, and people are gonna, well, where did that come from? And none of us would know. Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, sorry, I'm getting a little frustrated, and I apologize if I'm giving curs, um, I think this all stems from. Like, one meeting where you decided at some point, Jay, to say that Tony should be spending the money on something else. And it sort of snowballed into this. Right here, this, this memo that we're looking at. And I think that there is no problem that we need to fix. That's, that's all I have to say.
All right, did you say Tony?
Yeah, Tony wanted, go ahead, Tony.
Thank you, so I wanna clarify that memo, so the memo came to you guys because. There was definitely a misunderstanding, before Brian took over as administrator. And when I was hired, I went to Bill and I asked him about the get grant process. Uh, at that time, Bill told me that, that grant, that, uh, staff was encouraged to go out and get grants, and that. The grants, uh, as long as they did not meet these three criterias, one, creating a policy. Like the motorcycle, that, that, I'm right with you, Andy, that is apples and oranges to what we're doing. So that was one, number two, if it was outside of my budget, meaning that I would have to go to the board and ask for additional funds. Or three, if there was a need for a commitment, like a cop's grant, which has been explained here, so crap, cop's grant would be. You know, the cops could, uh, grant could provide me with, uh, three-year, uh, officer. And then after the fact, the board would have to pick up the bill, I can see those three options, but to micromanage every. Type of grant that we go out and get, so for instance, the, the, uh. The, uh, example I provided Jay during a conversation. Was what if I choose to go out and get five thousand dollars for new desks for my staff? All of you have been to my office, you know how bad it looks down there, I said, what if I go out and get five thousand dollars for staff? Furniture, right? And I go out, get the grant, the grant does not, A, there's no need for a policy. It is not gonna require any more budget than what I already have in place, and it's not gonna require a match that is, or, or a commitment. Outside of just that year that I'm purchasing. Jay said to me, yes, that is something that you would have to bring to us for discussion. Well, then, how is that going to promote me to go out and go work on all these grants, or try to find a grant to better my department? If I'm gonna have to go through meeting after meeting, besides the fact that if anybody's ever worked on grants, and I know Andy and I, we, you, we've discussed this. They're timed line, I don't have time to, to wait a month or two months to get it on an agenda. Now, the grant that, that, um, the ARPA grant that, uh, Jay is talking about. That actually was, so it's ninety-eight hundred dollars, it was given to us because of the population we serve. Not the number of officers, but the population we serve, it was given to every municipality out there. So we ended up with ninety-eight hundred dollars, I took it one step further than most places have done. Most places have already started spending their money. I took it one step further and ran it through public safety, just because they're a public safety, and that's what the grant is really meant for, public safety. So that's what I was gonna use it for, but then I started to hear that there was conversations without me being present, so I thought. You needed to hear that, now, on top of all of this. Uh, there was a, I talked to everybody who is staff, all the, all the department heads. And they told me exactly what, my understanding of how grants work is the way it was. I went out and found an example, which I know has been checked not only through the agendas, but I called Tom personally and asked him. There was an eleven thousand dollar grant that was, uh, received for radios back. Years back, did not go to the board, that was over eleven thousand dollars. That basically, we already had the radios in place, he was just replacing the radios, so he didn't need oversight for that. He ran that through the administrator and ran it through, uh, finance. That's really all you need for those things, if I was going out to go get a motorcycle or quote-unquote helicopter. Obviously, I would have to bring that to the board, because it's gonna require a policy change, it's gonna require training, it's gonna require insurance. That's why you hire department heads, is so they can do their job, and to micromanage them with all of these processes. Is not, is not okay, and it's not good for the village, secondly. The, uh, one of the department heads, who I'm not gonna name, was asked to go check on policies. And at one of our department head meetings, learned that there was no policies from all our neighboring communities. There was no policy regarding grants. So I, I think those that are arguing the point that no grant policy is needed. Are on the right page, now, should there be a procedure, maybe a written procedure? As far as those three topics that I've just discussed, I'm all for that, but I think that you guys are going to handcuff. Department heads, if you start putting policies together and requiring us to bring every little thing for you guys to discuss. About furniture, or about, you know, better equipment, or, or whatever, it's not outside of the realm of what we already have. Thank you.
I'd like to respond, I think, chief, you're. Forgetting about the staff meeting with all our attorneys and our planner, every one of them said that everyone in the villages. That they work for not only require people to get permission to grant, but also to receive. Pittsburgh was mentioned, and Madison was mentioned, Cambridge, Belleville. Um, so I, I'm not sure that statement, I think what they were saying is that there shouldn't be an ordinance, and I agree with that. It needs to be written policy, now, if the board wants to do exactly the three that you suggested. As guidelines, I have no problem, but they should be written down for the next department head to look at, otherwise. It just makes no sense not to have that, I don't really care what the policy says, as long as we have guidance. So people know, that's all I'm saying, I don't care what the makeup of it is, I have my own opinion and I'll express it, but. The bottom line to say we shouldn't have a policy is just not the way it should be done. We need to give guidance to new people, so everybody's on the same playing field. All right, Andy and then Cameron, no, okay, oh, Doug.
I'm just still trying to figure out what problem we're trying to solve here. Like, what, uh, what, are you trying to ensure that department heads and anybody in the village. Who applies for a grant and gets one, that we, as the village board, gets to tell them how to spend the money?
No, okay, listen, let me back up, what I, I'll, I'll go along with exactly what the chief laid up. The three points he laid up, the difference is, instead of just saying this verbally. And the next person who comes in doesn't know what that is, because they're not here at this discussion, we put it on paper. And it's under whatever you wanna call, call it a procedure, call it a policy, call it whatever. And in that way, the next person can look at it, and they have a clear understanding, Doug.
That's the answer, so, the answer is, we have to trust our departments. But the answer is what's practiced, and it's been done for the last thirty years, and if it's not written down, then it can change. And nobody will know, it's called tribal knowledge, and people change, village boards change over time. I think it's as simple as putting together a chief, only what, what, uh, Bill Chang told him, is the practice that we follow on grants. Put down three bullets, we're all on the same page, and that's that. That's that simple.
Andy? Uh, I'm going on point three here under grants again. Uh, says grant funds used for approved expenses do not need village for approval, but shall be. State in the next quarterly budget, blah, 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 why would anybody who has already had their funds secured by the village board apply for a grant?
It's done all the time, the chief did it for body camera, we approved body camera, he followed the grant that paid for part of it.
You see how that dis- decentivizes, like. We're telling, I don't understand, it's like, hey, here, here's your money for body cameras. Why would, why would he go out of his way to.
So, what, the whole thing is not the approved body camera?
When those things happen, it's done somewhere else.
Like, it's thirty thousand, but he thinks he's gonna get a grant, so, so we did budget for the thirty, but I think it's a grant for, yes.
That's what I'm doing.
But that, that's what, that's not what this is doing.
Yes, it is.
But that, that's, we're gonna have a much smaller policy, that'll be how the three ones work, yeah. Our, our staff has done this throughout the years, while I was on the village board before, they've suggested approved. They have a budget, and maybe a lot of bits and grams, and they save some real money, that gives us opportunities to do some of the nicer things. It makes me wonder what problem we're trying to solve.
It's, it's not, don't even look at it from, all we're trying to, is to. Put it on paper what we do, how is that, does that make you, have you?
Only told us exactly what Bill Chang told them about grants, we put down those three things, I think some of. You only pull up exactly what Bill Cheney told them about grants. We put down those three things. I think some of this isn't right. Those three things are what we need to put down. If that's the practice, then we approve it and that's done. I want them to come to board with us. I want them to have more, I want to be more ownership of their department. They're paying their jobs.
Yeah. All right, I got, Michael?
I just have a quick question. I don't know if this falls into the three pillars that Tony laid out, but my question is like, since I did an email and he talks about spending the money, he talks about putting up, uh, signs throughout the village to remind speeders to slow down. If he received grant funding to do that, does he have to come to the board for permission to install speed signs? I would, that's not what he's, I think that you do, because the board controls village policy, the police department doesn't. We control the property of the village. If somebody's going to erect a speeding sign on it, the board approves that. The police department does. You see what I, no, I'm, no, he's talking about lighted speed signs, like out, coming in like on P that's gonna use electricity. Electric's an ongoing expense. All I'm saying is that if he got a grant for that and it hasn't been approved in any revenue, he just can't go do it. That's the arm of scope of the police department. That's village property that you're using, and the board is the only one that has control.
You're right.
That's what I'm saying. So we need to think about things like that, because when you apply for your grant to go to South Africa, you aren't saying you're gonna come back and build a statue of an elephant that they have to look at all the time. You, you, you aren't incurring any permanent costs or using their property. When you, like, you win this grant, you aren't saying, now I need a piece of your property.
I'm also using the, the name of my employer.
Oh, sure, but you get what I'm saying. I'm talking more. Okay. I, 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 here's what I'm gonna do, move this on. I would like to have, I, I gave a shot at it, okay? And I'm gonna be honest, I just cut paste other policies, so I'm not doing it. So who would like to take another shot at it and we'll have another discussion? Who wants to try to write this up?
I'll take, I'll take a shot.
All right, thank you, Cameron. So.
I would, I would do it. But I, I'd also thank Chief Tony for the son with three criteria.
Yeah, that's fine.
I was gonna, I was gonna run it by him.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's fine.
I'd be pretty impressed.
But I think Michael also brings up something, there's gotta be a support staff. So, so let's just, all right, we've all, we've had this and we'll, we'll move it on. Another person's gonna take a shot at it and we'll discuss that one. Yeah. All right. Well, thank you. All right. So here we go, number ten, discussion of curbside leave pickup information letter to residents.
Absolutely.
Okay. Again, this is an information thing. This was approved for last fall. We couldn't do it because of staffing. So we're gonna do it this fall. This is more information. You know what the community in that area is going to be receiving, uh, September thirtieth. All right, so if there's something in there again that you find could be changed or something, go ahead.
I got a question, because I see it on that pickup. Pine needles held as leaves?
No.
Yeah, oh yeah, he's the boss on this. All right. So that's just an information thing. You've been aware of it, you have the information. All right. All right, number eleven. Okay, this is discussion of possible action of sixty-seven. Act sixty-seven, I'm just gonna lay it out, and then we'll take this and piece it. All right, act sixty-seven, when we were first told about this, was the shifting of conditional use permit. We were under the impression that it was the sole responsibility of plan commission to handle conditional use permits, which would include two meetings of public hearing and then a vote on. I have recently found out that, uh, it is possible for the board to be involved in this process. So what is attached in your, uh, packet is the process that is for conditional use. Now, uh, what is in mind because of the process, the potential process? We have to do two meetings by state statute. If the board wants to have final word, then I believe the board has to hear the evidence and the testimony, because here's our problem. If we do the hearing and collect the evidence and everything at plan, and then make the recommendation to the board, how is the board gonna really make the call on this without hearing the evidence and seeing the evidence except for secondhand? So what you need to think about is, do you, and I brought this up, uh, at the staff meeting with the attorney, and his recommendation was that the board, if they don't like it, send it back to the plan commission with what they don't like, and then the plan commission sets up another, which means these people are gonna be coming to three months' worth of meetings. So you don't have to make the decision tonight, because it is extremely involved. But I want you to think that if you want final word, then I think we have to move that whole process to the board, because I just don't understand how you can do, it'd be like having a trial in one setting and then the jury somewhere else, and then you just tell them what that is. So think about that. I'm only bringing this up because originally, we were out of it, that we thought by state statute. I felt once I found out that that's not correct, that the board should have at least the discussion to do it. So, Cameron?
I haven't been on the planning committee that long, it's been like nine months, and the only, uh, conditional use permit stuff that's come up has been for businesses, from what I'm aware.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Is that normal?
Well, we had one resident, there was one resident that.
Got one underground.
Yeah, yeah. They went to the. Okay, there you go. So, so it, it, but I don't know if that makes a big difference if it.
I guess I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, and how it's on the table, like, how, because it hasn't happened that long.
No, we've done one, we've only used the new system one.
And it, to them, okay. And then, I guess, two, I just, I, I wanna make sure that we aren't making it harder for businesses to come into the community and like, are we adding additional layers and steps here and sending it back to planning and like, maybe it could be months and months until?
Well, that's what you guys gotta talk about.
Right.
Right now, I can tell you, there's our ordinance. If we were gonna change it, we spent a lot of money on this and time, we would just flop out, you know, village board with plan. It'd be pretty easy to do.
Like, in the entire ordinance, you're saying, like?
Right, so it doesn't go to plan?
No, it has to go to plan.
Yeah, that's what they had a theory, right?
No, well, well, my theory is, plan would have the conceptual, uh, part of it. So they would come and say this is, and then we would give them feedback on what they should do to help them. And then it would go to board, where they do the public hearing and take all of the evidence and, because I don't, I don't know how, how to do it, where.
Because you don't want the separation of the hearing and the.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll think about it.
Yeah, no, that's why I'm bringing it up. I'm only bringing it up because if we were originally under the impression that we couldn't be part of it, now we can. I didn't wanna hold that from everybody, so I'm throwing it off. And these are the options I can think of.
Superficially, I think the president always has to be in the planning committee by ordinance.
Yeah.
And then it does have two trustees on it too, so I would, you know, just thinking about it for two seconds, it seems kinda unnecessary to like. You already got enough people there, like, we really wanna.
Yeah. Well, let's, let's read it over, think about it, because it, it's out there.
Are you moving out?
Oh, unless you have some.
From this, I, a quick Google search, pine needles are considered leaves.
He doesn't want to, how are you gonna screw up equipment? But you might wanna put that on the sign.
Oh.
Because it says, leaves only, no grass, put things or other yard waste, however, pine needles by definition are important for different plants.
All right.
Considered weak.
We will.
I'm not gonna make a stink of it, but I'm just.
No, no, I appreciate that, and I'll talk to Jerry on that. And then we'll add that, because of your house.
Jerry's in the public.
Well, whatever. We'll, we'll solve that. No, I appreciate that. All right, number twelve, discussion of possible action regarding ordinance twenty-one update chicken and ducks. Once again, this was just, uh, a failure where we put it in into the zoning, but we didn't put it into the animal control ordinance, so this would just.
Except the village ordinance chapter twenty-one, updated.
I would like a second.
All right, I got a more than a second discussion.
My, my only discussion on this, I don't have an issue with it. It's just that I was confused as to what we were doing, because there wasn't a leader page that explained this at all. I, that's all I'm saying, it's just, somebody came in here and read this, they would understand what we're updating. I didn't understand when we were updating it. I think we would need a leader page, like, just something quick, wasn't put into animal control. Somebody reading the packet, remember the public book was going on that, because.
That was a run out of time matter, more than it was anything else.
Okay, I just wanted, I didn't know what.
No, I hear what you're saying. It's just, we, we run across these little slip-ups that we got it correct, so it just kind of come on, but.
But, well noted, well noted. Two sentences would have confused.
Yeah, understood, understood. And I, to be honest with you, I didn't know what it was like, oh. See? I didn't wanna restart the whole chicken duck thing again.
We would have had fourteen ducks.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, understood, understood. Valid, valid. All right. All right, number thirteen. Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that was contentious. All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same, so move. Thank you. Yeah. All right, okay, you should have the distribution of the twenty twenty-three general operating budget and SOP. Are the SOPs in the three-ring binary, you've gone about the ones that were in here, in the packet? Okay, where, where are the SOP, the SOP?
Right there.
Okay, all right, good enough. So we're not discussing that. The operating budget and the SOP will be talked about at next month's meeting. So take a look at this, just so everybody can be reminded. The base budget was a two percent increase, so that's what it is. The one thing that will be added will be, hopefully, we're meeting to talk about, uh, the benefits and salary part of this, I think September seventh, is that correct? So we'll probably have some ideas and maybe even some options for you guys on that when we talk about operating. So I have Cameron and then Bobby.
Can I just get a quick, like, explainer? I mean, what the SOP is, I mean, I see it there. Why is it treated differently?
Okay, so, what, what, what we did started about two years ago. I give a base budget percentage, that's two percent. Anything that they want over the cost of the two percent over the base, has to come in on the SOP.
Understood.
And just so you know, salaries and benefits are not part of this. We pulled them out, if you remember, and that'll be a later discussion.
You said something about September seventh.
Well, no, that's not for, that's, uh, staff, department head, because we're gonna be reviewing the stuff that Doug's committed, yeah, and other ideas, just, yeah, yeah, don't worry. I'm just letting you know that we're meeting to get stuff running for the September.
Yeah.
Bobby have something?
Yeah.
Uh, I had a question from a department head regarding, um, if supplemental requests for additional like salaries, they say the, you know, it does something with the, the three percent. Um, but if they wanna ask for more than that, are they allowed to submit supplemental?
We will be talking about the process on the SAP.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, do I have a motion to go into closed session? So, all right.
Can I go fill up my water?
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, take a quick, okay, let's. All right, let's just take a quick break, and then when we are roll call. Yeah. Yes.
This is Paul House.
Yes.
This is Brown.
Yes.
This is Brown.
Yes. Yes. All right, we're in closed session, so this is. Say aye. Aye, all opposed, same, so move. All right, it's convened and open. Uh, do I have a motion? Uh, to purchase public property?
A motion to, uh, bring counteroffer by the administration and village president for the vote hall. I will second that motion.
All right, I got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, aye. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same. Don't move. Thank you very much, and always a long one.
You grab your dark side, I'll forget you're gonna go. Cameron, sorry, I was kind of a bit tonight, my bad.
What about on me, man?